We'll call our meeting to order, and I'm going to ask that you please stand for our invitation and our flag allegiance. To the great Creator, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the precious sunshine that you've allowed to shine upon us. We thank you for the opportunity to walk on this earth to be of service. We ask that you will remove anything within our hearts or spirit that would interfere with the progress which needs to be made to make this city a better place as a whole. So we welcome you into this meeting today, that you may have your way, that you will lead us with your wisdom, knowledge, and your insight and your light. So once again, thank you and welcome. Amen.
Amen. Our flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, I ask that you take a look at your agenda, and I want you to take notice. We do have two addendums which has been asked to be added to your agenda. Please take a moment to review those items. We have appearance before court for our council and also introduction of resolution. If there are no objection, these two items will be added to their agenda. Any objection? If here are no objection, the two items will be added to our agenda. And at this time, we will have our approval of our minutes. Please review our minutes and...
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a motion in the second that our minutes be received from April 11, 2022. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it know that the minutes have been received. Next, we will have appearances before our council. And counsel, if it so pleases, you may notice that we have a resolution which was added, and this resolution is a resolution number 2022-16. It's a resolution for the Florence Soccer Association U-14 Girls Soccer Team. If there's no objection, could we please take this item at this time so we can do the recognition before them?
So.
We have a motion in a second. All right, so any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So at this time, we have that resolution, and we removed it at this time. So, and it's been accepted. So at this time, we recognize this council. Ms. Jabeley?
Thank you very much. It is with great pride that the City of Florence and council historically takes an opportunity to recognize those who are out there in our community doing great things. And I really believe we don't take enough time as a community to recognize all the wonderful things that are going on in our community here. And we've had some opportunities to recognize Wilson High School with their state championship that they had. Well, we have another state championship team before us today, and that is the Florence Soccer Association's U-14 Girls Soccer Team is a state champion. And so today is going to be another state champions' day. And if it's all right, I'll go ahead and read the resolution at this time, and then we'll invite everybody up. So this is resolution number 2022-16. A resolution of recognition for the Florence Soccer Association's U-14 Girls Soccer Team. Whereas the Florence Soccer Association's U-14 Girls Soccer Team won the state championship at the President's Medal State Cup. And whereas this title has earned them a bid to compete in the regional medal President's Medal Cup in Dallas, Texas. And whereas the U-14 Girls Team will be the only team representing the state of South Carolina, playing head-to-head with the best from Alabama, Georgia, Florida, Tennessee, Texas, and North Carolina. And whereas this team is one of the most accomplished in the history of the Florence Soccer Association, and will be the first female team to win this distinction and attend regionals for Florence's local club. And whereas the team is comprised of 12- and 13-year-old young women who are local to Florence, attend both private and public schools, represent multiple socioeconomic backgrounds and ethnicities, and are role models for area youth. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Florence, South Carolina, commends this athletic accomplishment and congratulates the Florence Soccer Association's U-14 Girls Soccer Team for winning the state championship at the President's Medal State Cup resolved this ninth of May, 2022. And this time, I would ask the representatives of the girls soccer team to please come forward.
And while the representatives are coming forth, I do want to commend y'all, especially our young ladies, because soccer has made such a difference internationally. The soccer team for our Olympics made a difference in how the female players were even being paid. So on the local level, for y'all to become champions, I want to tell you, congratulations, ladies, for making such a significant difference. Thank you.
The country's here, but we have to have all the ladies who are involved.
The team, the star, that's right.
Counsel, stand behind them, please.
Come on this way a little bit.
Counsel, just stand.
So on behalf of the City of Florence, we would like to present this resolution to you, and I'll ask if you don't mind to introduce yourselves as the coaches, and then we'll let all of the young ladies introduce themselves as well.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. My name is Lindsay Chapman, and I am the head coach with this lovely group of young ladies. I got to them... Stassi and I actually thought we had been with them for two years. We just got to them two seasons ago. So this is our second season with them, and it's been amazing watching them grow.
My name is Megan Stassi. I'm the assistant coach for these girls, and we've had an awesome time coaching them for, like Lindsay said, two seasons now, and we're very, very excited to watch them in Texas.
My name's Karen, and it's the baby coach.
My name is Jordan, and I've been on the team for, I think, four or three seasons, and I like playing with this team.
Ladies, your moms and dads are going to want you to say your last names, too. So what was your last...
I'm Jordan.
Hi, Grace Jordan. You've been a good coach.
It's valid, isn't it? I have a plan.
Oh, it's not about us.
Jordan, I'm proud to be on this team and doing these girls for so long.
I'm with the coaching.
It's been one over the past year.
I'm with Scott, and I've had a fun season, winning and losing.
My name's River Spring, and I'm glad that Lindsay and Megan support my work.
I'm with Carol. I've been with these people a long time, and I'm honored to be on this team.
My name's Taylor.
I'm with Darden. Very expectant team.
We have good coaches.
I'm Kylie Thompson, and she's a great coach.
My name is Rebecca Jordan.
My name is Gabby Scott, and we have definitely improved the back of this team.
My name is Raven Flattman, and I like my team.
My name is Lauren, and I like this team.
As they gave the coaches a lot of credit, I have to say, I think that's because they're terrified we aren't here right now. But Stassi and I came into a group with... And you can be a good coach all you want, but when you have a group of girls that are already competitive, that are already driven to win, that already have the heart, your job as a coach is extremely easy. So hats off to you, ladies.
Is there any member of council who decided to say anything?
Good luck in Dallas.
Thank you.
Is there any member of council who wants any response or any... Chair recognizes Councilwoman Pat Gibson. I just want to say again, congratulations, girls. We are going to give them a few minutes.
It's kind of a pack. I'm kind of nervous. That's a lot of young ladies.
I think more are coming in here.
More ladies? More soccer players?
Counsel, wait a moment. We have individuals coming in. We were at capacity, and that is one of the reasons why we had to take this intercession to allow our youth to be recognized.
Hey, Tonya, how are you?
Good.
Thank you. It's Dad's time. That's what makes it. Trust me, it's the time.
At this time, we are prepared to move forward with our agenda. Next, we have appearance before council. The first to come before is Mr. Kevin Crawford, who is a resident who desires to speak to this council in regarding to mental illness and incarceration. If Mr. Crawford is here, please come forward. At this time, I did not see Mr. Crawford. We'll move him further down in case he should come in while we are presently still entertaining appearance before council. Next, we have Reverend Leo Woodbury, Executive Director of New Alpha CDC, to provide an update on ceasefire zones in the City of Florence. Will Mr. Reverend Woodbury please come forward?
We want to thank the council for an opportunity once again to present to you this time. We got some much recommendation as to share information around the progress on these proposed ceasefire zones that we shared with the council a few months back. At this time, Mr. Anthony Hall from the Democracy Center here in Florence, South Carolina is going to read a statement representative of all the citizens here. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have gathered here today, citizens, representatives of various organizations and churches, to call for more immediate action on the escalating gun violence in the city and county of Florence. Several months ago, we made a recommendation to the City of Florence to look into establishing ceasefire zones on city property as a way of leading and a way of providing more opportunities to bring people to the table and come up with positive ways to reduce the gun violence in our city and county. Today, we say to the City Council that because they have not taken the leadership that we have given them, we, the citizens, representatives, and leaders of the City of Florence and the County of Florence, have decided to establish a ceasefire stakeholder group. Of course, we hold the door open to partners. We hope that the city will participate as well as law enforcement, business, and many others. On May 14th, at 10:00 a.m., we are calling for a mass citywide rally to call for ceasefire zones and stakeholder groups to be established to reduce the violence in the city and county of Florence. We're hoping to look at using new approaches such as interconnected networks of video cameras and systems as used in Atlanta and provided by companies like Flock. We would like to look into having gunfire noise activation systems that the sound of a gunfire immediately connects 911 and the police department and dispatches them to the area where the gunshot was heard. We would like to put together a toolkit training session so that the faith leaders in all our churches, parents, teachers, grandparents, mothers, fathers, can teach their children how to use techniques for nonviolent conflict resolution and resisting peer pressure. We also will be working on a toolkit to help deal with thousands of people who are suffering from stress during the pandemic. People who have lost loved ones or people who are sick, who are ill, we have financial difficulty, which we feel may be adding to the violence in our city. These are just a few proposed solutions. We look forward to having more people join us at the city and county-wide rally on May 14th as more leaders of our stakeholder group engage, begin to talk, and to work on more solutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's any questions, we'll entertain them. At this time, we're not quite ready yet to announce the members of the stakeholder group, the ceasefire community stakeholder group is. We're still talking to people, but once we have the initial members of the group, we will announce them not only to the public but to the city council. So if there are any questions at this time, we would like to entertain all comments.
Do any member of council have any comments? Our question.
Yes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes, following Councilwoman Barnes, Councilwoman Braddock, and then following Pro Tem, and following Pro Tem, Councilmember McCall. In that order, please.
Thank you for your energy. It is needed. This gun violence and violence situation, and it's just not guns. We see on airplanes. People are just up in arms. So I like the part that you have, the toolkit for faith leaders, for us to teach how to dismantle this rage that's going on with people, because it is going to take a transforming of the mind for us to come out of this. I said before, we can't buy our way out. We can't town hall our way out of this. It is going to have to be us actually working in the communities with the people and partnering with groups like yourself and others in the community for this change. So we thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Councilwoman Braddock. As I told you in the past, we appreciate all of your efforts to make sure that this issue is at the forefront of the community, and thank you for all the work that you've been doing.
Yeah, likewise, I would like to ditto some of what Councilwoman Barnes said. It's going to take community involvement. I mean, that's what's going to have to happen. People are going to have to be willing to go to the law enforcement and tell them what's going on in their neighborhood so that we can do more. And so I appreciate you, Pat, for... And this isn't new. You've been doing this for a long time, you know, for past several months. So appreciate you not just, you know, starting something but continuing with it, and to me, it appears to be growing. We definitely need community involvement. I do want to say, you know, the press release says that because we have not taken any action on city council in our leadership, that action is being taken. We're having dialogue. Our police, our local police chief, Heidler, our sheriff, T.J. Joy, are working hand in hand. All efforts are being taken to address this issue. You know, I've reached out to the city manager to look at some other things where there is collaborative effort to come up with a plan, a strategic plan, to address this issue. Other members of council are also working on this. So it's not any lack of effort, care, concern. Many things are going into this, and we all up here look forward to partnering with you and other leaders in our community to address this issue.
Thank you, Councilwoman Braddock. And that remark was specifically directed at the fact that we had asked the city to look at doing ceasefire zones on city property, and we got a response back that the city attorney and others could find no instances where ceasefire zones had been formed in the United States. And we then forwarded some documents to the city showing that ceasefire zones have been formed in the cities in the United States over the last 15 years, and actually gave examples where the zones are set up in Oakland, California, Cincinnati, Ohio, Boston, Massachusetts. And after sending all of that out, we received no response back from this city, and that is what that remark is directed towards.
Thank you for clarification.
Reverend Woodbury, your being here today and your raising this issue and continuing to raise this issue is critical because what we know is without citizen input, without community input, without community ownership of what needs to happen, it's very difficult to make any meaningful change, because you have to change people's hearts, and you got to change their spirits, and that takes a lot of effort, and it takes a broad-based collaboration of the community. And what you're bringing to the table before us again, and what we've been working on, is that collaboration. So I thank you for that. We are, all of us up here on council, are committed to seeing what we can do to work with the community to try to address this very, very serious and growing problem. And while it is a problem in Florence, what we know is it's a problem all over the country. It's not just unique to Florence. But we need to come up with innovative solutions. And I know Councilman McCall has been working with Alan Heidler, Chief Heidler, on an app that we've been talking about to try to get that, and you may want to comment on that further when it's your time. But thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jabeley.
Definitely. Again, thank you all for being here. I think it's well known that there's a lot of grassroots support around stopping gun violence in this community. And again, as Mayor Pro Tem Jabeley indicated, it's not just a Florence thing, it's a nationwide thing, and I'm glad to see the energy in this room here in combating that gun violence. But I do have a question pertaining to the ceasefire zones. I know when you presented, we all indicated we were in favor of it. It's more so on the legalities of it. Any city in South Carolina has ceasefire zones? I know you mentioned Oakland and Boston, but any South Carolina cities have ceasefire zones itself?
No, not that we know of it. Since Florence has been a leading city in so many aspects, we hope that they will lead on this issue as well. We spoke with some of our legislators, and they're contemplating perhaps giving some support to presenting legislation that might even, like drug-free zones, carry additional penalties for people shooting in public spaces where people communicate.
Definitely. So again, I'm 100% in favor of it. I know when you brought it up, we all was. I just, I want to definitely try to get a concept with the attorney afterwards, and we can definitely look at the legalities on it. Because I want to make sure, I know in South Carolina, we preempted on the city council from doing a lot of things and like toughening, like different laws, some things we just preempted on, and I'm not certain if this is one of it or not. I do know for a fact, I know we met with the stakeholder group about, me and Councilwoman Barnes, met with the stakeholder group about a month ago, and what we did was, the City of Columbia does have an operation ceasefire. It's not ceasefire zones in particular, but it does have an operation ceasefire. And I see in the packet here, you have that this is Northern District of California has something similar. And we are actually, at this very moment, trying to get up and running an operation ceasefire here, and I'm glad to see you all have a stakeholder group now so we can definitely collaborate together and try to get these solutions going. But I'm here to tell you, I'm proud of the work that you've done, that you have always done in this community, and have this grassroots support behind you is indicative of your work. Thank you all so much, and let's try to get this thing knocked out. But again, on the ceasefire zones, I do want to make sure we're not preempted by the state of San Francisco.
Absolutely. And some of the businesses, owners who are represented here, we're going to print up some decals and put them on our homes, on our businesses, et cetera, and start the process that way, because we can do whatever we want to with our property. We have property rights. And so we invite the city to continue to collaborate with us and to join us, May 14th, on Oakland Avenue, as we call for a city and county-wide rally. And also invite people from surrounding communities who have expressed an interest in replicating what we're proposing. So we hope... So we hope to see you all there, May 14th at 10:00 a.m. at our ceasefire rally in North, in North Florence.
At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Braddock. Can I have more?
Good afternoon, everyone. Reverend Woodbury, I know you started working on this some time ago. It didn't just happen. And other groups have been doing some rallies and having town halls also. I think would really help, it would be beneficial if all the different groups came together and we formed a one big group so we could all work together, we would get a lot more done. If we're all doing it together as one, instead of everyone having a separate group, a separate town hall, a separate rally, I really hope that we can get people to join in with you and just have one big group. We need to unite. We could get so much more done if we all worked together. And I hope you feel the same way.
Thank you, Councilwoman Woodbury. Well, it takes all of us, and we need to realize that whenever there's an act of gun violence, the entire city suffers, the family of the shooter suffers, as well as the family of the, families of the wounded and the deceased. And I agree with you absolutely that it's only going to take unity and solidarity to help us de-escalate the violence in this city.
And the reason I'm saying that is because I've been on you for a long time, and I know that you've been working on similar problems to this one for some years, not just a couple of months, a few months ago. And that's why I said I'm hoping that we can all come together, unite, and do it. We can come to a solution and get a lot more done as one.
Thank you. But it's not just me, it's all the people in this room.
Well, yeah, yeah, you're right, all the people in the room. But we need to have it as diverse as we can get it, as open as we can get it, and as large as we can get it.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scofield.
Reverend Woodbury, you've had multiple rallies since I've been elected, and I've been blessed to be able to attend a few of them. And you and I actually had a conversation there at the last one on Oakland. It was that it takes a village. And I read a post earlier today that someone said that, you know, the village stops when we start banning back out at the village. You and I talked about how family is crucial in this, and we've got to get back to that mindset. And I am appreciative of you reaching out to these local churches and beginning to give this dialogue to them to be able to teach these families how to be able to just de-escalate situations. And we've got to be able to really step up as a community and begin mentoring all of our youth, not just our own kids, but everyone. I grew up with multiple people I considered my father and multiple people I considered my mother. And those people have had a lasting impact on my life. And I'm sure you are going to be remembered for having that same lasting impact on multiple children's lives. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any discussions? If not, I would like to say thank you, Reverend Woodbury, for your thoughts today. And also thank you for everyone who attended. And I do want to acknowledge that when it comes to gun violence, this is not a new space, new face for the city or for the county. I would like to also acknowledge all the individuals who have been working for years to prevent gun violence. But I thank you for this group today for coming together. They, I was actually meeting with a pastor and his wife earlier, not too long before this meeting, acknowledging the fact that there are several organizations and community members who are constantly on the ground trying to prevent gun violence. But one of the missing pieces was that a lot of times organizations do events, one area of the town, then someone will do another one on another area. We talked about the mentality that we're, if we're supposed to be one city, you're supposed to be able to travel from any area of the city. When you do, do events on one area or promote one area, you still bind into that mindset of this is my territory. Our territory is to be the home of the city of Florence. No one should be afraid to travel anyway in this city because the city belongs to all of us. And how we're going to make a difference, just what you see now. It's no credit going to no one. Every one of us is supposed to be doing our part. When it comes to the city, and I concur with what Councilman McCall say, we have to look at the legalities of doing any kind of ceasefires or anything. Because for me myself, I don't want to create something that's going to create more of a police state that you actually increase time, you put the people in jail, or you get them on charges, then they get on probation or get their bond, and then they're back out, commit another crime while they're out. So we have got a recidivism problem that we've also got to look at issues of how can we get our unemployed employed? A lot of people, when you look at them, when they're doing things, they're not adequately employed. They don't have adequate income. Some are doing things to live, survival instinct. So we have got an issue that's just greater than the gun. It is a personal issue, it is a financial issue, sometimes educational. We have got a major issue to work with as a city, along with our city, our county, our school district, and our industry. Because if we want Florence to be better, we've got to come together and make it better. We have got to produce young people who see opportunity and don't see this a threat, that they feel like they've got to get out here and do things that's not right and take someone else's life. So I commend everyone. Reverend Woodbury, I appreciate you coming forth and the community coming forth to say, this is a major issue. And I believe that all of us have part of the answer, regardless of what our race is, regardless of what our income is, we have got to come together. And I'm going to be honest, I don't believe that laws such as the government is going to make that change. It's going to be the people, it's going to be the community, it's going to be the churches, it's going to be the businesses, and everyone coming together to make this change. And I hope this is the turning piece right now. And we did have, I had the honor of talking to our Florence Economic Development Partnership and expressing this. And so our businesses and our colleges are also acknowledging and seeing that it's a problem that we all must come together to solve. So know that when y'all look here, when y'all see this on TV or media, reach out to Reverend Woodbury. And not only Reverend Woodbury, there are ministries, I know some ministers I know who have actually ministries who go into the area where these young people especially have been killed. There's one particular minister, Pastor Trey Mitchell, he has got a ground ministry who, soonest when the young man was killed off of Carver Street, he was there. And even the ones before, because he's, he believes and knows that you've got to show people a better pathway and that it's possible. And for anyone who's been down that pathway, come forth, help these young people understand. You don't have to stay where you're at. And there are people who are willing to help get you out of this situation. So thank you for all the stakeholders. Thank you to all the council members who are doing things that you don't even see. This council works when you don't see us. We're out there. So thank you. And everyone's probably not going to know it, but thank you. But that's what's going to take y'all to make a difference. And understand, when you see everyone here, a lot of people might think that's bad. This is good. This room is overflowing, and this is how it's supposed to be. So thank you all again for coming forth. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, sir, in fact, you, Reverend Woodbury.
May I add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
You talked about the intersectional nature of problems in any community or any country. When we presented to the council the information on the Justice 40 opportunity in terms of federal funding, we also gave you a document talking about New Alpha Community Development Corporation CEED program, C-E-E-D, which is the Community Economic and Environmental Development Program that we put together. And so we would encourage the council to look at that document again. What we are talking about doing some things around the environment and also economic development to create more jobs in, in the city of Florence. So thank you for bringing up that point as well.
And thank you, Reverend Woodbury. And I'm also going to encourage you, as you know, there's a new CDC that was developed back, well, financially based back in last year, 2012, that I will encourage y'all to meet with at CDC. It's called the CDC, so we'll work together. And when funds are coming out, funds can be utilized to help with programs such as that. So there are finances that, funds that will be set aside in the budget. So I would encourage y'all to meet together. And we can get information from our city manager, our city clerk, with the president of the organization or the chairperson, and go from there. Chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
One small thing, while we've got a packed audience, I want to echo what Mayor Theresa Mize Irving indicated in her press conference a couple of weeks ago. It is important that we all do our, our, our fair share. And unless, if you see, if you see something, say something. And what that, what that entails is what she indicated, we need to start back joining our neighborhood watch groups. That's a small, small, low-hanging fruit, that we all can do something very, very crucial for our neighborhoods. Because you see things all the time, or your neighbor may see something all the time. And I guess you can all collaborate together, and you will be hand in hand with the police officer from the neighborhood who can help make sure that our neighborhood is safe. So again, while everyone is here, please, we have over 30 or 40, 36 different neighborhood watch organizations. Please go out and join those neighborhood groups. Thank you to them.
Any other comments? If not, thank y'all for being here today, and Reverend Woodbury for the New Alpha CDC. I do want y'all to get connected with the CDC that was formulated from the city branch so that y'all can partner together, partner together with the funds that will start being available so that y'all can come up and work with a plan of how also this can play a part addressing this. Because we're going to need your support, and we, I'm going to personalize for our businesses to support this organization and others to help get employment for the young people who are underemployed or not employed. So we're going to have to show a better pathway. To all the ministries that are involved here in Florence, I believe we've got probably churches in every community of the city. I would pray that we all will come together to treat the city as one body so we can address this issue. I believe when we hit this issue as a team from every aspect, we won't have no other way but to do this, reduce the violence that we have. But we've got to come together as the one who know a better way and show those who may not know a better way, a better way. So thank you for everyone who's committing even now to make a difference. Thank you again to everyone who's here. We appreciate you. Thank you. We're going to give them a few minutes to be able to exit the chambers. A part of the power of Florence is the citizens being able to come together and meet with their leaders and their officials and express their concerns and also give their support. So thank you to all those as they're exiting. And as they're leaving our chambers, we're going to get prepared to move forward with our agenda. And next, we do have on our agenda is appearance before the council. We have Ms. Charlotte Smith representing Jeffries Creek Association of Neighbors, and Pastor Pete Rivera representing Emmanuel Baptist Church, and Dr. Wendy Richardson representing Briggs Neighborhood Watch to speak on an Irby Street development project. Will those, please, individual, please come forward.
I'll be delighted.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you guys for having us. I feel privileged, this is an awesome position to be a part of this city. I was born and raised here. I graduated from Francis Marion.
Okay, go Patriots.
Yeah. I left here for a season and began my career and met my husband. And when we decided that we were going to have a family, we chose Florence to be the place where we wanted to return to raise our children. We've got three awesome children, they're in public school, and we love this city. We returned here to raise our family here and intend to be here for a long time. But the question that I want to pose to you today is, will my children want to return? Are we creating a city where my children choose to be here? Now Florence is poised for growth. It's inevitable. We have a great location in the state. We are, we have 20, we've got 95, we got a straight shot at the beach. It's a great spot to be. But people are not going to stay in this community unless we create a community where their families can thrive. Families of all socio-economic statuses want a safe place to raise their children and enjoy the city they live in. So I ask, what's the plan? Now, I know that Florence has a comprehensive plan, it's on the interwebs, you can go look at it, you can study it. It was established in 2011, and it's up for a new draft. There's a draft out there, I know I've heard, I haven't seen it. But let me see it. But I, I want to know, does the comprehensive plan truly direct growth and development in the city? I mean, if there is something that is called a plan, is it driving the train? Now, our city planners have been meeting with us, and they, I got to be honest, they're awesome, they have been very transparent. The council has met with us. I, I feel like y'all have been working with us to answer our questions and direct our concerns. I want to be upfront about that. But I feel like we're in a position right now that everybody's just being reactive. Nobody's being proactive. There doesn't seem like we are in charge of what's going on in the future development of our city. So according to the current plan that was adopted by the city in 2011, the comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan is designed as a framework for guiding future development, redevelopment, and community enhancement in the city and its planning area over the next 20 years and beyond. The purpose is to establish a vision along with realistic goals and achievable strategies that residents, businesses, and landowners, major institutions, civic groups, members of advisory committees, and public officials prefer and will support with action in the years ahead. So the comprehensive plan is a vision. So for example, according to map 2.4 of the comprehensive plan, our current plan labeled future land use. The area between Irby Street and Gully Branch, where I just so happen to live, is identified as parks and open space. So how is building two high-density housing units implementing the vision of parks and open space? It's just confusing to me. Now, in actuality, the, according to the plan or the vision, the areas in need of development, according to the plan, are far north of the current development site that we are in the middle of addressing. The majority of the development that we're seeing coming in is outside, is out, not in that window. So again, who's driving the plan? I just, I just want to know. And I've asked, I mean, I asked y'all, I asked you that question. And I asked, how does this development on Irby Street fit into the comprehensive, comprehensive plan? And I was told, well, the comprehensive plan is, is really just a suggestion. Oh, oh, my bad. So why are we trying to shove high-density housing into pockets of green space within already established neighborhoods and, and business areas when we have a huge, awesome city to grow? Who is in charge? Is, is property owners or the city? Or who's charged with planning growth? And is, is our, is our comprehensive plan a part of it? So who's in charge of holding our city leaders accountable to following through with the plan and, and the vision that we've been given? Is it the city council? Is it the planner? Is it developers? Is it taxpayers? Is it voters? I mean, like, who's? I mean, like, who's in reality is driving the train? So before you today and in the coming months, you will be given the opportunity to act on behalf of the citizens who put you in those seats. You need to think about future growth and how zoning designations will impact the larger community far outside existing development. Please, y'all, think about the locations where you're allowing development, business and residential. Think about the long-term impact on our city's shape and growth. Think farther than these little pockets around the city. Work with the county. Look at zoning and growth i- in a proactive way. I implore you, city council people, be intentional. Don't allow a systemic problem, greedy property owners or developers to dictate how our city grows. Get a vision, follow it, be in charge and think about the big picture for the long term. Destroying our green spaces and burdening our taxpayers with a failing infrastructure is not a good plan. So if you consider changing zoning, I ask you prioritize how you can guard our natural resources, our natural ecosystems, prioritize building community, prioritize keeping us safe, like our friends were here earlier. We're gonna grow. We're gonna grow, y'all. Let's be proactive. The system is broken, but the citizens of Florence should not pay the consequence by allowing outside developers to dictate how and where our city grows. We need to prioritize preserving natural resources, natural ecosystems, and surrounding areas like Black, Black Creek and Jeffries Creek and Lynch's River. And we need to, if we're gonna develop around them, it needs to be appropriate. We need to be proactive in, in upgrading infrastructure, which I know that y'all are working on. We just got to get it done before we lump on more development. And we need affordable housing opportunities that include homeownership and rental properties. Development needs to be appropriately located and we need to be the ones, we need to be the ones having a voice in what it looks like. So let's incentivize property owners. Let's incentivize developers. Let's incentivize businesses who are bringing workers and residents to come into our city, taxpayers. Let's entice them to our beautiful city and prove to them that the long-term plan of our city is worth investing in. So as a city, we need to commit to protecting the natural ecosystems. I repeat, it's obviously something dear to my heart. I speak for the trees. We need to guard those spaces and allow them to thrive. We need to be proactive in the decisions that we make in development and create space for organic community growth. Our plan, our desire should be to nurture community and opportunity for all socio-economic groups. Give individuals and families a city to be proud of, a place they wanna stay. I return to raise my children here. Are they gonna make that choice for their family? Uh-huh. Thank you all for letting me speak for you today.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, next.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for this opportunity to be with you. I think perhaps there we go. I'm the PowerPoint girl. And I would like to first begin by letting everyone know that Pastor Peter Rivera was not able to be with us today because his house is flooded. Ironically, the topic of our discussion today is the environment and he is in the Timrod Park neighborhood. He sent comments and email to Councilman Braddock. And just in the spirit of respecting everyone's time today, I think I'll just, Councilman Braddock, if you would please share his comments with the council, I would be most appreciative.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock if he so wishes.
Yeah, if appropriate, let me see if I can find that email. It'll be on my phone with several others.
Well, when I say share, I mean, share as in outside of this meeting so that we can keep moving forward.
Okay. I will. I'll, I'll forward it out.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman.
I appreciate that. So I would like to begin, my name is Wendy Richardson. I'm the founding president of the Briggs Neighborhood Watch in the Forest Hills neighborhood. It is a pleasure to be with you and to work side by side through this process that we are experiencing right now in our backyard and all over the city. I see some friends from the Harmony Street, Dixie Street area as well, Second Loop as well. So this is happening all over the city. These developments, high-density developments that, um, out-of-town developers by and large seem to want to cram into our small spaces in the city. Today, I would like to speak to you specifically about Indigo Towns, which is behind our Forest Hills neighborhood. And I would like to first present you with a petition. I believe all council members and Madam Mayor, I believe you all have a copy of that petition. It is over twenty pages filled with over three hundred signatures from residents of the city. And I implore you to read through the petition and to take note that we have quite an opposition to the destruction of our environment. The five points, as you'll see on the presentation, are wetlands, infrastructure, runoff and flooding, traffic, and schools. And I might add with this last point, it came to our attention when we began researching that Florence One Schools has never been part of the discussion in any of these high-density developments. And Briggs Elementary School, for example, which is the neighborhood school that Indigo Towns residents would be placing their children. Dr. Richard O'Malley was at our meeting in March and he stated clearly that there is no more room at Briggs. Florence One Schools is trying to do away with these terrible mobile units that our children have been in for years. And in fact, they are a safety hazard now. So if we remove those mobile units, and they hope to remove all mobile units from Briggs at the end of this academic year, we will be faced with potentially having to return mobile units with an increased population. The public schools, as you are all aware, must receive students. They cannot turn students away. So this is a very important point. This is the proposed Indigo Towns development. If you have not seen it, it is comprised of over fifteen buildings. And each building houses, I believe, four townhomes. They've also been called apartments on some of the documents we've obtained. And there will be a total of sixty two and three-bedroom townhomes if this proposal goes through. The blue arrow that you see on the screen denotes the original address that was provided on the LIHTC application. And you can see that the project had to be moved to the north as indicated on this January twenty twenty-two sketch. And we'll talk about that in a moment. I'd like to explore some of the points on our petition. And the first one is the current flooding and sewer backup. And I say current, but actually, this has been ongoing for years. These pictures were actually taken last week on May third. And we have a video, although, let's see if that will work. I would just, this is in a neighbor's yard on Wisteria, not on the creek side, I might add. And she took this and posted it. And you can see, well, it's going sort of in slow motion. But in any case, the water is flowing very rapidly on the side of her house. You can see flowing down the street of Wisteria. The house owned to your right is a house on Mohawk Drive. And this is the neighbor's backyard after the rain. And you can see that the rain is up into her backyard. This is the flooding of Gully Branch. And there is a blue line stream that also runs through the back of their house. I'd like for you to know, however, that we have an established history of flooding and pollution of Gully Branch and Jeffries Creek. This is nothing new. In fact, records show back in nineteen eighty-nine, from the city council minutes, this very issue was brought to the attention of council. As you can see, Bobby Holland advised council that several residents along Santee Drive, yet another street in our neighborhood, whose property backs up to Gully Branch, have filed complaints that their backyards are being flooded by the stream and the water contains sewage. I'd like to add that we have requested sewer calls from the city between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. And we had a total of a hundred and thirty-three sewer backups. This is between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. This was in nineteen eighty-nine. So you can see that here we are with virtually the same situation. Ms. Smith mentioned the comprehensive plan. I'd like to call council's attention to the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance of twenty eighteen and the Jeffries Creek Protection Overlay District. And highlighted, you will see, the key here, which states, "The city seeks to regulate and control development activities adjacent to Jeffries Creek within the city limits of Florence. The city further seeks to preserve the Jeffries Creek floodway in order to protect and improve the water quality, scenic beauty, and wildlife habitat of the creek." The comprehensive plan that Ms. Smith referenced, this is the map that she was referencing with the future land use. Encircled, you will see this exact parcel where Indigo Towns is chartered to be constructed. It is listed as, Ms. Smith let the group know, parks and open space. So there's some other issues. The first one being the FEMA map. The FEMA map that has been used is from twenty fourteen. It has not been updated, at least according to our conversations and correspondence with FEMA. The Florence FEMA map has not been updated since twenty fourteen. And I quote, FEMA is required to update flood maps every five years. If a map is not assessed within the five-year window, the level of flood risk is considered unknown. In our estimation, this alone warrants halting the Indigo Towns project. How can it possibly be built if this area that borders Gully Branch and the wetlands is considered unknown at the time? I'd also like to add, you'll see in bold at the bottom of this screen, that Phase One, which is Indigo Point, you may have seen it. It is standing over on Cherokee. It is an elderly development. And the Lomar F submission was never completed by the same developer. In fact, the developer has only recently submitted the Lomar F to FEMA and the building is already standing. I hope everyone caught that. The building is already standing. The Lomar F was never submitted. And according to our conversations with FEMA, it was never submitted because the developer never paid the fee. That is why it was not processed. So just to give you a timeline, and this is not a complete timeline, obviously, but on April seventh of twenty twenty-one, Connolly Builders, this is the developer of Indigo Towns, he sent an email to the city stating that the development would have to be moved to the north, as you saw on the sketch earlier. Due to environmental issues, this is key. This is our contention. August third, some months later, in an email exchange that we've obtained through the Freedom of Information Act, this is an email exchange among members of the South Carolina Housing Authority regarding Indigo Towns. The subject line of the email thread was, "Example of what I think we should not spend our affordable resources on." And as one member of the South Carolina Housing Authority stated, and I would be happy to share these original emails with the group. And I quote, as I've mentioned ad nauseum, "We shouldn't be building castle-type retaining walls on sites with extreme topography. This year, in my opinion, Indigo Towns has such topography and should be disqualified." End quote. And I ask, why was it qualified in the end? We do know that Mr. Connolly frequents the State House. I don't know why it was qualified. I cannot answer that question, but I do know that this was stated clearly. So I'd like to talk to council about the cumulative impact. I know we have a couple of attorneys on the council here. You may be familiar with environmental law and the cumulative impact. And this is what it refers to. It's the impact on the environment resulting from the incremental impact of the action when added to other past, present, and reasonably foreseeable future actions. What does this mean? Indigo Point is already standing. We have the proposed Indigo Towns. There is an unnamed Phase Three that's chartered to be built somewhere in this wooded, wetland area. Hope Springs is another development that's on the twenty twenty-two LIHTC applications that will go on Irving Street in the same area. And then, of course, we have the Belmont that is across the street, across Cherokee, but also on Irving Street. So cumulative impact must be considered by the city. We implore you, what will the impact be? Not of just one Indigo Point, but of four more. We have a total of five. What will the cumulative impact be on our environment? If you're not familiar, I thought the council might find this interesting. These are the twenty twenty-two LIHTC applications for Florence. There are a total of six of them. And in fact, Florence received more LIHTC applications than any other area in the state for new LIHTC developments. That should cause us to pause. Why has Florence become a target? We've talked about this, the excessive growth in rental property in the city. I would just like to present you with some pretty recent statistics from the recently published Census twenty twenty findings. And as you can see, if you compare twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, owner occupied housing rate fifty-eight point five. Now we're at fifty-six point six. So homeownership is on the decline, clearly. So we don't like to complain without offering solutions. So we have come up with ten suggestions to the city. Because when we meet with the city, they seem to be at a loss, often with what they can do concretely. And quite frankly, this is no blame to the council. And quite frankly, this is no blame to the council. They are busy, we recognize that. We have taken this on as our passion, so we've had time to reflect a lot. Number one, align the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. They have to work hand in hand. Two, rezone the undeveloped areas bordering Jeffries Creek or its tributaries like Gully Branch to prevent further environmental degradation. Three, expand the Jeffries Creek Overlay District. Four, increase buffer requirements of developers. Five, add cumulative impact as a consideration in the Unified Development Ordinance. Six, please solicit public comment early and forward comments to the appropriate city entities. A lot of these, well, really, a lot of the public outcry, I feel, could have been avoided if the public had been able to express their voice earlier in the development process. Seven, consult Florence Wine Schools. They deserve to be a part of the dialogue. Eight, require a comprehensive battery of impact studies, traffic, environmental, noise, et cetera. Nine, no items of public interest in June and July. We find it interesting that many of these important issues are deferred to the summer months when citizens are on vacation. So we would ask the council to please consider a kind of sabbatical during the months of June and July for items where the public has already expressed concern. And finally, number 10, I would implore the city to establish an environmental oversight committee. Remove now. An environmental oversight committee to oversee proposed development. This is important, I'm going to read number 10 again. Please establish an environmental oversight committee or commission, whatever you would like to call it, to oversee proposed developments adjacent to or in woodland, wetland areas. Council, thank you so much for your time. We understand that Indigo Towns will be coming before the Planning Commission in June, when many citizens will be on vacation. We would ask that you consider deferring the Indigo Towns project to the August meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any corrections or comments from council? Chair recognizes for Tim.
Wendy, Charlotte, thank you so much. And thank you to all the people who are here passionately showing up for our community. And what I infer is not just the neighborhood that you're referring to, but this is a citywide issue that involves the environment. It involves long-term planning. It involves purposeful, intentional planning, all of which applies to everywhere. And we've encountered this in other communities in our city. I know I was over at Harmony Street where that issue has been raised earlier. And so this is something that on Second Loop Road has been raised earlier as well. So all throughout our community, this is an issue that we are grateful. I'll just speak for council. We're very grateful, not only that you've brought this to our attention in the manner that you have, but for the hundreds of hours of research. And I cannot overstate that. It is phenomenal, the amount of research that you all have done. And thank you so much because it takes that, it really takes that passionate, deep dive that y'all have done. And so we're very grateful for that. I am personally grateful that you came up with a list, your top 10 items, action items for us to consider. And I will ask that you please forward that to all of council. And I would ask our city manager, who's taking copious notes over there, that we can schedule a time, perhaps during our upcoming work sessions that we're going to have with the city, that we're going to be having in our upcoming, the next month or so, that these be topics, and this be a very important topic that's put on the agenda for us to discuss at our upcoming work session. So I think I speak on behalf of all councils say we're appreciative, we're engaged, and we want to take action as appropriately as we can and as intentionally as we can. So thank you again, we appreciate it.
And other members of council? Well, Dr. Richardson, once again, thank you. And also Ms. Smith, thank you as well. And I would like to state that with your information, you can simply email it to Casey Moore, who's our city clerk, and she'll get it out to all of the council. But also, when it comes to issues related to our environment, I would ask that you reach out to the Residency and Sustainability Commission that was just formulated this past year because they will be looking at issues such as you were talking about that entail our environment. So we are being, as a city, being proactive to get things in place. So please, you can reach out also to Ms. Moore. She has a schedule of all the commissions, and that would be a good place for you to start integrating this information into the city system. Because I know you've met copious many times with our staff here, and I know we've spoken as well. And so this is a part of what is entailing a community. Y'all always states, no one knows everything, but all of us know a little bit of something. And when we bring it together, we can make a difference. And when it comes to various things such as the UDO, all of the city documents are things that are creative, but over time, it evolves. It evolves with the growth and the changing of the city. Because you don't want a stagnated document. So thank you for providing the information. Most of all, thank you for your concern. This is what we need for all of our citizens to do, is be involved. Because this is not the council's individual city. This is our city. And it's the citizens who are going to have to get out here and give the information and be a part of it. But most, I always say, if you bring an issue, always bring a solution. And you did that. So I cannot say anything but thank you. And if that completes that segment, we're looking forward to working with y'all as you're moving forward, see how we can make our city better. So thank you again for being here. So at this time, we can move forward with our agenda. And next we have on our agenda is Mr. Chris Hanley, the Executive Director of Helping Florence Flourish, to speak to council regarding appropriations for the Helping Florence Flourish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's good to be here. And thank you all for your work and what you're doing to help our community.
Fast, I'm going to ask that you maybe give them just a moment.
Yeah, let them exit.
I'm here for you, Chris.
Thank you, Charlotte.
I believe in what you're doing.
And I love that energy. That's a good part of Florence, that positive energy.
I was glad there was a little pause between me and Charlotte.
I'm just glad Charlotte's my child's youth ministry.
Yeah, exactly. She's got the passion for it, for sure.
So at this time, we can proceed. And Mr. Hanley, you may move forward. Thank you so much.
Well, it's good to be here and thank you for listening. I know it's the season when you all consider budget. And so I'm here to ask if you would consider a possibility that we have, you know, helping Florence flourish is in the business of trying to restore and bring back. And so one of the things that we have done, and you have been in collaboration with us, partnership, for a home we've built recently and are in the completion stage of that. As we've done that work, we've become more and more aware of other structures that homeowners, they actually own, but they are without the funds to really fix those homes. And so we would like you all to consider putting us into your budget for next year. We're asking for $25,000 to help us with some of the house repairs that we desire to do in the next year. That'll go along with grants and individual donations that we receive as the year goes along. But this would help us to meet that mission in our community. There are so many homes that need a lot of work. I toured a home that probably needs to be demolished as well. And I've had many calls of folks who have been referred to us and asked for help on their homes as well. And so I'll be very brief. Don't have a long spiel for you all. That's all I have to speak to. But your consideration in putting us into the next year's budget would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Before we move, I do want to acknowledge and thank you for all that you've done. I know Helping Florence Flourish has been helping with the city for years. And also with the home that we just completed. I know the city helped, asked for the home for that resident while she was away from her home. So thank you. But I also want to acknowledge and thank Helping Florence Flourish, but thank the ones who worked with you, who is actually from various career fields, who made this home happen. So that's a part, again, of that volunteerism that's here in Florence. And I also want to encourage you, just as I said before, that there is a new CDC that's Community Development Corporation that's going to be working with doing things in the community. And I would encourage you to also reach out to them and partner because a lot of the things, the strength is going to come when organizations come together and pool their forces together. And I think a good example of that is with No One Unsheltered, when all the various organizations that represented our homeless population came together to form a group, and the funding was directly through with them so that they can put their requests in and receive funding there. So I'm going to encourage you to reach out to that CDC as well and help formulate that maybe a pathway bringing all the organizations together who are helping with the various homes to come together and pool their resources together to make that happen. But thank you again for all that you're doing. And I'm going to recognize two here. We have Councilwoman, more, actually, Councilwoman Barnes, followed after that, Pro Tem, followed by Pro Tem, Councilwoman Peggy Gerges, and more. Thank you all.
Well, Chris, I am excited that you're here. I was the one that called Chris about a home that should be demolished. And even though he has several on his plate, he was considering and trying to make some things happen. And I, you know, I've watched, I've been a part of Helping Florence Flourish. And it's been a pleasure to be a part of such an awesome group that's really transforming our communities. They are, this group is on every turn, whether it's racial bridging, whether it's building homes, restoring homes, educational things. They are really tackling our community's need from every corner. And he works really hard with faith-based community, business owners, to get funds. But we are now saying we are a part of growth. We are saying we want our community to change. We are tired of the dilapidated homes. And this group has a proven history of what they've been doing. And so I pray that we would consider his request because I know that it would go to good use. There are a lot of people in homes right now who would not have been in homes if it was not for Helping Florence Flourish and Chris Hanley at the leadership. So thank you so much.
Chris, my friend, thank you, like everybody's saying, for all that you do and all that Helping Florence Flourish does. We've talked about being purposeful and intentional, and we know the problem with deteriorating homes and dilapidated homes and homes. I mean, they're literally, you can't swing a dead cat without hitting four of them. And particularly in some areas, more so than others. And it is a very critical need, not only just to get the homes repaired, but as was seen earlier, homeownership is a very tough issue here. And if people are in dilapidated homes and they can't afford to fix them up, what happens is they leave the house and it just continues to deteriorate and they end up renting somewhere else. So it adds to the problem. You're coming up with solutions, fixing up homes so people can stay in it and now they have some equity in that building and will keep it up, maybe encourage their neighbor to do the same thing. That is a positive momentum that you're talking about. I think that we need to strongly encourage. But one of the things that I would like to see, and I don't know if this is something that you're able to do or not, is some kind of plan. I would love to see what your organization's plan is and how the funding would fit into that. So are you looking to do five houses this year, four houses, three houses, 10? How, I mean, what, is there some kind of approach that you're looking at that you can give us when, again, here's our city manager taking notes for budget time? But is there something that you can give us that maybe we can consider when we, in terms of looking at a plan? I don't know if that's possible or not, but if so, I think it would be helpful for us.
The only thing I can answer right now is that we're aiming at October being the month where we try to do some of this work. So some of the planning for that is just now getting going. And we have about four people that have approached us for different types of repair. And then this one, very serious one, that actually is probably a whole house. And so you still have to weigh it out and determine, you know, can, probably if we did the whole house, that'd be the whole budget.
Gotcha.
And so, or do you do a little more minor, but still significant repairs? And so those kind of decisions haven't been made yet.
If there's...
But money coming will help make some of those decisions.
It will, it will. If there's something you can get to us that we can have and take a look at. I understand that to pin yourselves down at this point in time is premature. And I understand that. But if you can get something to us, I think that would be helpful. At least for me. I don't know if other members of council, if it would be helpful.
Sure, I understand.
It would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, thank you for all that you do. Because, you know, I call you day or night when someone's in need. So Randy, don't feel bad. I call him day or night also.
We spoke last week, didn't we?
Yes. And the house that you talked about is almost complete. I remember when the mayor and myself met with you guys at the meeting and we actually toured that home, I was almost afraid to step inside. That's how, what bad shape it was. Everything was rotted. They didn't have heat, they didn't have electricity, what, one? She was using one electrical cord, I think. But, so you're doing so much with so little.
What amazed me about that house, Pat, is she had no water, no electricity.
No, she had nothing.
It was rat-infested. And I go to Haiti regularly, and her home was as bad as those who live in Haiti. And we're here in Florence, South Carolina. And it broke your heart to go in the house.
Yeah, I mean, I really was literally almost afraid to walk into it because you didn't know if the floor was just going to collapse on you or not. That's how, what bad shape that house is in.
Yes.
And you did it. Would help, of course, but you did it. And you also now do No One Unsheltered, help people get a hotel room if there is no space in the homeless shelters. So you do so much with so little. How many houses have you done already or completed? Do you know?
This is, we really only have worked on two now.
Okay.
It's just the beginning.
But you do such a good job.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I truly appreciate all that you do. And I know the people that you're helping appreciate it also. I've called you for a number of things. I've called you to try someone who's homeless and they had an outstanding utility bill. You helped get that paid so that they could get a place of their own. I just called you on numerous occasions, and you're always willing to help if you can. So thank you. And I'm sure that I'll be very, I'll definitely be in consideration to help you with more funding because you need it. I was just talking, now I'm hearing that you're doing with the homeless court. You're dealing with the homeless court now.
Been there, yes.
Yes.
Debbie Jackson, Judge Jackson is the spearhead.
Yes, I spoke with her today. So I call everybody, not just you. So, you know, when people need help, that's what we are supposed to do, public service.
Yes.
And I thank you and I appreciate it. And hopefully, we can give you a helping hand.
Thank you.
Does that conclude any comments or questions for the council? If so, once again, thank you. And I want to continue to reiterate that the city do go through the course of the legal processes of being... the legal processes of being able to do demolition with homes. So we actually, we do do that. And we assisted actually with the home, what Pat was talking about, we actually took care of that demolition. So when it, we're at the budgetary time period, so put the paperwork in for your request for budget. And most important, I will ask you again to reach out to our city clerk, get information for that new CDC, so you can also team with them. Because I really would love to see more organizations who are working with homes and demolition and building homes, contact that CDC. So everyone can start coming together to see what everyone is doing, to see how everyone can correlate and make that really productive. So thank you so much for that. And after that, but do that because it's new and it need that assistance of pros like you who've been at it for a while too. So, and we're looking for it and encourage any of our citizens who are doing what you're doing to come forward so y'all can help the city in the direction that we need to be getting going. At this time, we're not recognizing Councilwoman Barnes.
Just wanted to say, Chris won't say, he is on the CDC board. So we put him on the CDC board because of his work in the community. So he, so Mayor, you know, so you would know.
No, I know he's on that board, but being on the board and asking for assistance is a different thing.
Right.
Right. And sometime when you're on a board, you have to clarify those lines of what's legal and what's not legal. So I encourage you to reach out to the board because you know one of your officers is attorney, and I know you're setting up and make sure things legally in place. So I encourage you to still reach out to the CDC, talk to that attorney, and see how this is going to fare because it is new. But if you have organization, it may not even be you who come forward from Helping Florence, See, Helping Florence Flourish Secret Fund, it could be someone else, because you might have to recuse yourself. So, but if there's organization such as yourself who's, that's their focus, that CDC is a place for them to be, to get these, so everybody know what everyone is doing. So those funds can be utilized to have the maximum impact for the city. And like I said, I know you know that, but just reach out to them and talk to them. And the ideas such as you have can also help you to structure how the funds for the CDC will be spent. So please reach out.
I will, I will.
And I thank you again for all that you're doing, all that you will be doing in the future.
Now, let me take this in jest. My remarks were a lot shorter than the council's remarks.
And we appreciate it. Thank you. And then also, next on the agenda, we do have, it was added before us, it was appearance before our council, Mr. Frank Williams, in reference to the basketball coach, to speak to the council concerning fees at Pearl Moore Basketball Center. Will Mr. Williams please come forward? And Mr. Williams, as their accident, if you want, mine is kind of hesitating to, they want accident, the door's closed, so we can give our full attention to you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. You may proceed.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I appreciate y'all allowing me to talk on youth basketball in the Florence community. Yes, my name is Coach Frank Williams. I coach at Williams Middle School, girls' basketball. I just finished up my 22nd season of working with the youth. One of the issues that is going on in Florence is the youth center trying to get a gym to work with the youth. The fees are high, I think. You know, you're paying $45 to $50 an hour just to work with the youth. I did my research at the soccer field out there on 76. I think they're charging like $40 something dollars an hour. And then it's just, if we are trying to get our youth off the street, a lot of youth, parents and stuff cannot afford to pay, you know, to use that gym. Because like on Tuesdays and Thursdays, adults can go in there for free. And they have pickleball throughout the day. So my thing is, because I might be biased a little bit because I work with girls' basketball. And it is very hard for me and some other coaches to train the youth anywhere. Because I started off at the park. And the park got so bad, I couldn't take my kids to the park anymore because of the gun violence and stuff like that. So I'm just asking, what can we do to help the youth to get off these streets? Because there's nothing here. Like a lady said earlier, you know, why do our kids want to come back here if there's nothing for the kids to do? The Pearl Moore Center, I think it closes around 8, 8:30. But if I want to go in there and just take a kid in here and just want to work with that kid, I got to pay $45. But I'm not charging this kid anything just to work with this kid. Because I do a lot of volunteer stuff and I try not to charge kids. I don't want to charge kids because I know it's hard. Doing this for so many years, you know, and going through COVID, because what I do, I help kids get into school. You know, first thing with me is education. So a lot of kids, they get scholarships coming through the programs that I do, but it's a cost. So we have to do a lot of traveling. And with most of this traveling, I put forth my money to help these kids because a lot of families can't afford the fees. So I used to go to the Boys and Girls Club. They closed that down. They won't let us use their gym anymore. So I have to take my team out of Florence, just to practice there. Like, we have to go to Tennisville. I might have to go to Bishopville. So I have to go all these places, and it shouldn't be that way if you're letting adults go in there for nothing, but we are charging kids to train and do this? I'm just not understanding. And I want to, you know, for our kids to stay here. You know, that's one reason why I came back to Florence, is to help the youth. So I hope we can come up with a solution, you know, because $45, $50 an hour, I just can't do that with my team to not put myself in there. Chris, that.
We have some questions from the council. Chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
Question, and I definitely understand the situation. I think you're not the only person who actually came, you're the first one that I know that came to speak. But I know I've spoken to about four or five other different coaches who are saying, like, it's, the price is a little steep. But far as the compensation, I know you mentioned you went into the Boys Club. About how much, I'm assuming you had reserved a place, you had to pay per hour. Do you know how much the Boys Club was charging before they shut down? Can you recall?
We was paying $15 to $20.
And that's per hour?
That's per hour.
Per hour, okay. And you're saying that the price now is 50?
That's 50, that's always been priced with the, at Pearl Moore. So like at the church, at the She-Rack, they was charging me $25 an hour. So I'm just trying to figure out why it's so high to, at the RAC, which is supposed to be a community center, you know, for the youth, what I thought it was. And maybe I have, you know, the wrong perception of it, but.
And a quick question is, I guess I should probably notice that I don't. Do you also, are you also allowed to use the Orange Street Center, or is that just the basketball center that's in Barn Street as well?
We was not able to use Barn Street, yeah. For what I was told, you know, we can't use that gym to work with the youth over there.
Gotcha. Randy, can I ask you a question right now?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Is that right?
This is a dinner. Like, primarily, where do we get the number? Is that a number that council set, or is that just a number that-
No, so it's an operational cost.
Operational cost.
Keep in mind, we're talking about programs that are not affiliated with our rec or athletic programs. These are, these are, these are extra. And that being said, the costs cover, cover our costs, basically, things like the personnel that are there during the time insurance, utilities. It's just a big group of costs. I guarantee you, it's not a moneymaker.
Yeah. Question, has it always, how long has it been? I know you're probably, this is off the top of your head. Has it always been $50, or has the rate increased over time?
Mr. Pope might be able to ask that question better than I can.
I think the price has been around $40 to $45 since we started allowing outside use. Outside use being programming other than city programming going on, like the city manager said, recreation or athletic programming. But that Pearl Moore Basketball Center is open and has free play nights that we allow adults to come in, Monday nights, I think. They can also bring a kid with them on Monday nights. There's no charge for that. But what has happened over the course of years is the number of traveling teams has grown tremendously. There's probably, and I don't know a firm number, but eight to 12 travel teams within the Florence area, all looking for space. And June through July, we have our summer basketball program. So there's not a lot of time each night is dedicated to that. And then December through the end of March is our youth winter basketball program. So it is available for rental. We have considered in the past month, we, going back to the question you asked, we run our athletic costs through our Parks Commission to make them aware of it. They don't necessarily approve of it, but they, I guess, agree with it so that we can keep the fees at a minimum. If you look around the state, we are lowest in cost for restoration in city activities, and we're probably low in cost for rental per hour of our field and facility areas.
I got a question. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. So say, someone like me, I do a lot of volunteer. Should we get some type of discount or something? Because we volunteer our time for free.
We discussed that, or are discussing that as we currently speak. And it may be that we need to reduce or look at reducing the cost of those per hour for particular Florence groups that need space. However, unless something has changed, it's my understanding that each person that plays on the travel basketball team, whether it's through a sponsorship or through either their pocket, does pay a fee to be a part of that travel program. Because they're not going to Greenville or Columbia and playing for free. The fee that they have to pay every weekend, as well as the cost of travel associated with that. So, I mean, there is, it's a, you know, travel basketball, travel baseball, softball, all of that's a moneymaking process.
Well, I just want to quickly, I think-
That was next. Ask Councilwoman Barnes, and then you was, go, you see-
I'm sorry, I'm-
No, you still, you're still your fact.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, you know, I see both sides of it, definitely. But I think we do have kids who are, we have people willing to get kids, help kids stay active and off the streets. And I think that's what we're looking for. So if we can look at any way of trying to reduce the cost, I think that'd be beneficial to help out some of our volunteers who are trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Captain, Councilwoman Barnes, correct?
Okay, before, this is not what I want to say to you, but before you go to seat, I've had several people to contact me over the weekend. I don't know if you all had that. They sent a picture of the center, and they were asking, what is this center? Because there's no, no name of Pearl Moore on it. And these are, these are some family members or friends who've gone to see this nationally recognized person. And if the name of the building is her name, then why isn't her name on the building? So you know, well-
Sure. Pearl Moore Basketball Center, the name is prominently displayed as you enter the main lobby.
On the inside?
On the inside. It's almost as wide as-
But if somebody's coming riding by, they would not know, because that's what they were asking. They said, what is this center? And it was a picture of the building. And then I kind of got confused because I thought it was Pearl Moore Center, but it was a lot of conversation on social media.
And I would agree. And one of the things about Barn Street, you know, we say Barn Street, and we know where that is and what it means. It means that there's a basketball center there, there's our recreation offices there, there's our team program there. But we have talked about between Jerry and the city manager and I, about doing signage at each end of Barn Street and listing the various facilities that are on site there, which is a good idea.
Okay. Well, I was going to say, Pearl Moore is standing there. But I was going to say, I'm a product of Wilson and Williams being opened up all summer long during the school year, but it was the schools that opened it up. And Pearl Moore and Ann Long and those coaches spent their summers actually teaching us. And most of us ended up getting free rides to college because of this. And so I would hope that we could also partner with the schools in the summers and because, and I can't, I have no jurisdiction over that. But it worked really well for us. They gave their times. And you're a coach at Williams. I'm wondering if, if that would be a possibility that they may could consider giving you some space in the school when schools close.
And I tried it. And here's your thing, and like I said, I'm probably being biased again. They have a lot of stuff for boys, but they don't have a lot of stuff where girls can get into a gym. I can't get my girls into a gym. But if you look around the city, boys at Pearl, boys at South, might be at Wilson, all these different schools. But when I actually get girls in, why is there a problem for girls' basketball? And that's why girls' basketball is down in this city.
Excuse me.
Y'all undefeated.
I went undefeated two years ago.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Cosment?
Sorry.
Are you complete, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I was going, yeah, okay. I just want to make a statement. I am Pearl Moore, and I've been in the gym a few times and watched them lead. But if you guys could offer a flat rate instead of a dollar every hour, that may help everybody out. Because it's a lot of money to ask for. If you practice five days a week, that's a lot of money for a function that's supposed to be a community center. I don't care who's practicing there. Because I came up through the system, just like Ms. Barnes said, that they didn't charge us for this. And we know the bill's got to be paid. That's why the city is under the city, and county and city taxes pay for this stuff. If you guys could just look around, just to set a flat fee, just like you said, girls don't get to do that much. And now I'm not running a camp where I had girls come in one week of the summer, volunteering my time, charging them $15 a bar from 8 o'clock to 3:30. Note that eight, they got trophies, they got t-shirts. You got to give something to get something. And if we're not giving, then we're not going to get anything. Just a flat fee that everybody can just agree upon, it would be the best.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Pearl Moore.
Pat Gibson-Haymore. Okay, Chuck, I'm going to direct you on one thing. We have a traveling team. We don't charge our kids to be a part, be part of that team. We do fundraisers and get donations. If we have to travel to Spartanburg or wherever to play, those kids don't pay anything for food, for hotels, or anything. And I try and put them in the best hotels. I want them to be able to experience something other than Motel 6, so we go to Hilton Runway. So that's a correction. Not all teams are paying, kids are not paying. The other thing is, when that gym was built, that facility was built, it was for basketball and volleyball. But I've gone by there several times, and pickleball's always there. Pickleball was done at Barn Street, they do it at Timrod. Do they have to be every place doing pickleball? I mean, as big as the tennis- I mean, as big as the tennis center is, maybe they could get a court, you could revise the court and give them a court out of the tennis center. But the kids need to be able to use that building for what it was built for. Basketball and volleyball. I went there one day, this was, um, I don't remember what the code, somehow two years just went passing. I'm not sure what happened to it, but I went there, and the building was closed. Pickleball was in there. And once the building, they finished, the building was closed. A parent was coming, came, luckily I was there, because the parent was dropping his, his son off, and he didn't know the building was closed. Had, had not been there, and he drove off before, and I yelled, the building's not open. That child would have been there and not been able to get in. He would have been left out there by himself on the steps, waiting for his dad to come back. So something really does need to happen. And I agree with Pearlmore, that maybe a flat fee would work. Um, a hundred fifty dollars for the season or whatever, but that forty-five, fifty dollars, um, an hour is quite a bit, especially when he's volunteering his time. And there's other volunteers. And it's just trying to get kids off the street. Give them something to do except get in trouble. Because the streets will get them in trouble. Because it's like, my husband always tells me, he says, the kids will find love wherever they can find it. Whether it's in the gym, or whether it's on the street with a game. You're gonna find love wherever you can find it. Um, and yes, I'm very disturbed about that forty-five, fifty dollars an hour. That's a lot of money. When he's, a lot of, even the, even the groups that charge, I've seen a lot of his parents trying to sell dinners, do all sorts of things, just so their kids can play. But now, we put them out the street for adults to play pickleball. I mean, pickleball is good, I don't have anything against it, but they can't just take everything. They can't take Barn Street, Pearlmore, Timrod.
And, and we, the pickleballers are in there in the mornings, typically during the days when kids are in school.
And I understand that, but in the summer, summer's almost here. School will be out. The kids need to have that place in the summer when school's out.
And there, it is available for both. Um, and, and the flat rate, we will certainly consider all of the suggestions that have been made today. But, you, you know, you mentioned, we, somebody mentioned five, why can't they practice five days a week? Well, if you take six or eight teams at five days a week, times an hour or two a day, nobody will have use to the gymnasium except for the travel teams. So we have to set aside times for our programs and, and.
I mean, of course, I understand that.
Send me out some pen.
That's all right.
No, I understand that. You know, I've been doing this for a long time in the city.
But we do have open night basketball, where if somebody wants to come in and do the one-on-one instruction, we're, you know, there should be a space available. There's plenty of goals within that auxiliary gym, that, that should work. Um, but if they're coming in as a team, we will certainly consider flat rates, we'll consider reducing the dollar per hour. We don't want to keep those folks out. That is not at all what we're trying to do. But we also have programs that we need to run. And again, June through July, we're, every weeknight, we're running our youth basketball program.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know that the city basketball league is running then. But find another place for pickleball. Play with the tennis center. There's, that tennis center is huge.
But there are courts at the tennis center.
And they're already doing, they're already doing Timrod Park. And I don't know if they're still doing Barn Street, but they, they started at Barn Street. The kid, they're adults already. They know right from wrong. We're trying to keep, teach the kids right from wrong, and trying to keep them safe and out of trouble. If adults get in trouble, oh, well, that, that means they should go see Chief Hyland.
Thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, chair recognizes Councilwoman.
Small, small question. I just, as far as availability of the courts, um, I, I get the time block. I definitely get that. But for the Barn Street Center, is that being allowed for, um, I guess, any type of practices or anything like that? Or is that just?
They are still having recreation programs in there. Um, I mean, Jerry, I think the recreation programs are still going on within the evenings at Barn Street.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah, that, that's right. We do, um, utilize that. A lot of times in the morning, it is for our owls program, um, and, and our senior programs for doing yoga and such, and different activities. And, um, in the evening times, it's available for our teen recreation program. But if, if there's any blocks of time, we can definitely look into allowing such things. So I, I can talk with the recreation manager and see if we have any blocks of time available.
Got you.
Now, I want to clarify from my, I've heard you say about the particular owl programs. Is the owl programs being held in the original Barnes, um, building, or is it being held in the gymnasium? Point of clarification.
In both. It depends on the programming that we're conducting at the time.
Now, when the programs are being held over in the Pearlmore Center, and it's owl program, are those early morning hours as well? Or when are those hours?
It's typically in the morning.
And, okay. How early in the morning use this at that time?
Um, usually mid-morning. It's not super.
So it's not a time period where it would conflict that you don't usually have a lot of young people there to go to play during it?
Question of that is from like nine till noon.
Okay, so most, so those type adult activities are being held in the off hours that youth is usually not there?
That's correct. We, we typically try to complement the two programs, so that the adults utilize the center in the morning time and the teens in the afternoon.
So as you're evaluating, one of the things when the Pearlmore Center was built, was built, because we wanted to focus on basketball, having a home. That was our goal. Basketball, home. Everyone else had a home and basketball didn't. So, and even with the funding where we built it, I pretty well think that when we built it, we'd already outgrew it by the time it got built. And this is evident in what we're seeing here today. So I know it's gonna be hard for our staff, but we may have to evaluate in and all program, not associated basketball, to have it housed at the original Barnes Center. Because the original Barnes Center, Center's a good center, and activities not needing the lines for basketball can still be held in the original Barnes Center. And let's put more of a focus back on the Pearlmore Basketball Center, who Pearlmore's here, and she's our Hall of Famer, and she's known for basketball. And that center should be known for basketball. So as a city, let's look at what can we do to shift it back toward basketball center. But also knowing that I want all traveling teams to understand, if you're traveling, if you're doing fundraisers and things like this, we're glad you're helping the children. But also calculate in that if the staff person's gonna be there, they're gonna have to be paid. So I'm hoping that y'all work together, but understand that the Pearlmore Center was built for focus on basketball, primarily for our city programming is where we are focused this. And anyone else who utilizes it, that's one of the benefits of being able to do it. But, you know, since it's not of the city, and we notice many insurance stuff and dot out our concerns, all those will have to be considered. So we have to be sure that y'all understand for our public, there's gonna have to be a balance. That's gonna have to be made. That if you're doing it, we're thankful that you're helping the children, but it's finances involved, and might have to have some things when we approach some of these corporations too, to help, because especially if we're gonna want funds to keep our young people focused. I stated earlier, part of preventing crime is everyone playing a part. So if y'all would work on that, and I think Councilwoman Moore had another question.
I just have a question. Barn Street Center used to close in the summer at nine P.M. What time is it closing now?
Um, during the weekdays, it closes at six, I believe. And we're looking at extending those hours into the seven, into seven o'clock hours. But we will be having our summer camps there.
Yes, see, that's a problem too. It used to close at nine during the summer, which had more time for everyone to use it. But now, closing at six, and then you're talking about seven, you're taking away the time that it could be used for basketball, pickleball, or whatever. But I don't think it's right for the Pearlmore Center to be used for everything except the city. Of, of course, the city, they definitely gotta be there. But for everything other than what it was built for. Because I remember Madam Mayor, she wasn't there then, we went there once, because you can't eat in the gym, but then there was some group in there passing out samples of food. So we had, we talked about that. So no one now can pass out any food in that center.
We, we relaxed a little bit on some of those. I mean, we, we certainly wanted to keep it as immaculate and clean as possible, but we have relaxed a little bit.
No, I'm not saying that that's wrong about, it was wrong for you to allow one group to pass out samples of food. But if there was a game, you couldn't even eat popcorn. I mean, that was, that's.
And I think that was a, that was an event, I think, that we were doing for, in conjunction with the, the farmer's market as, as it opened.
I really didn't care what it was for. If the kid, if they can't eat popcorn and doing a game, no event should be held in there with food.
Is there any questions, other concerns from the council? I would personally like to do double thanks. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming and presenting this to us. And you've offered some solutions, you've heard some solutions here. To our staff, I would like to thank y'all for coming. I know that y'all have a hard job trying to satisfy all aspects. And as we're approaching a budgetary period, um, I hear the concerns with Councilwoman Moore, the hours of service, that if we can look at what our summer hours service are, because that would also assist with having the young people not, help them have something to do during the summertime. And also, but when it comes to William, for its use through the school district, that would be something that you would have to pursue with them. I know in the past, prior to having the Pearlmore Center, we even had to utilize, um, William at times for basketball events. So I would encourage you to reach out to the school superintendent still with that, too. But thank you, um, thank you every, to everyone who came up today. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is, uh, because I know the, the city, um, took over the baseball field at, uh, the Boys and Girls Club. Did they take on the gym too, or just the baseball field?
The, that facility is operated by, um, Mr. Strickland, so that's not our facility. That's not our. And what it, what you're hearing with the baseball, what we're doing, we're creating a baseball complex in order to shift all the various city teams together. There will be some other fields that's out there that can be used for practice, but we're pulling that play into one central place.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all so much.
You're welcome. And thank you again today, too. And at this time, I will say that we just completed our appearance before council, and it has been requested that we take a short, five-minute intercession and come back. So at this time, we'll take a five-minute break. We have returned from our break there, and at this time, we will proceed into our public hearing. At this time, we will open our public hearing, and we will hear from Mr. Jerry Dudley. And our public hearing is a public hearing which will be held to receive information on the City of Florence Community Development Block Grant for the fiscal year of 2022 to 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we do receive a yearly allocation of CDBG block grant funds. And as part of that, we, last year, we received, um, two hundred, approximately two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, as of this point, uh, we have not heard what this year's allocation, uh, is going to be, but we typically hold a series of public hearings to receive input on how these monies should be spent. Um, we expect to receive the notification of the amount later this month. So hopefully in the month of June, uh, we'll be able to bring forward a resolution. Um, I know later in the agenda, we had it on here, but, um, anticipating these public hearings, as well as, um, not knowing the exact number, we'll bring it back next month for that. But, uh, we did want to hold the, a public hearing to receive further input in on the monies. Um, there are three CDBG objectives, um, that we are required to follow when applying these funds. Um, they are benefiting low to moderate income persons, uh, the elimination of slum or blight, and meeting an urgent need of the community. And we did, on May 31st, hold a public hearing through Zoom, and we had seven participants in, um, that meeting, three city staff and four community members. And some of the ideas that, uh, came of that were the continuation, uh, and removing of blighted and abandoned properties in the city, uh, the continued pickup of la, of litter, trash, and debris throughout the city, uh, the continuation of home and rehab repairs, faster service and repairing clogged storm drains, drainage program, uh, problems, uh, in Northwest Florence, assistance for homeless and feeding programs and nonprofit, such as Not My Brother's Keeper, continuation of down payment assistance for home purchases, uh, more canopies at bus stops throughout the cities, uh, increased suite stripping, uh, speed bumps, uh, enforcement of noise ordinances in neighborhoods, improved mowings and clipping removals, uh, along sidewalks and Lucas Wilson and North Irby Streets, and trimming of tree limbs on Fraser Street, were some of the, uh, advice given from that input session. We also, um, through our community services department, um, attended either in person or virtually, uh, several of the neighborhood meetings, including the Northwest Neighborhood Meeting, Liberty Street, Wilson Heights, Williams Heights, Wood Mount, and the East Florence Community. And the primary concerns brought from those groups included, uh, demolition, the continued demolition of homes within our community, and the rehabilitation of homes within our community, as well as the continued trash pickup. So those were the, the input we received from other, uh, public meetings.
Do we have anyone present who wishes to speak during the public hearing, representing the community development block grant funding? If there's none, we will call this public hearing to a close. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Next on our agenda, we are entering two ordinance in position. First, we have Bill Number 2022, that's Euro Nine, for second reading. It's an ordinance to annex into zone NC-10, the parcel located at 1142 Anell Drive, identified as Florence County, text map parcel number 01794-03-09. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
And if there are any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Interposed, like sign. Please let the record reflect that Bill Number 2022-09 has passed second reading. Next, we have Bill Number 2022-11 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter Four Articles, Number 14 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Florence, entitled Single Family and Multi-Family Residential Rental Housing Registration. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Have a motion in this second. End of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Interposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that Bill Number 2022-11 has passed second reading. We are preparing now to enter into, uh, introduction to ordinance. And council, I will draw your attention to see that Bill Number 2022-04 has been requested to be withdrawn by the applicant. So that therefore has been withdrawn, no action required. Next, we have Bill Number 2022-07 for first reading. This ordinance also has been requested by the applicant to be withdrawn. So therefore, there will be no action required on that bill as well. Bill Number 2022-12 for first reading, at the request of applicant, has also been requested to be removed. So our first three bills have been removed based on the applicant's request. Next, we have Bill Number 2022-13 for first reading. It's an ordinance to rezon N-C-15 to N-C-6.3. The parcel's located at 2150 Fernleaf Drive, and identified as Florence County Text Map Parcel Number 90018-07-03. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And second?
Second.
At this, at time, we have a motion in second. We'll hear from Mr. Dudley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I'll get my power point going here. Uh, this parcel is located on the corner of Fernleaf and Second Loop Road. This is very similar, uh, to, almost exactly the same, except for the parcel, to, uh, rezoning request that you saw last month for the parcel just south of this. Uh, it is currently zoned, uh, single family, NC-15, and the proposal is to go to an NC-6.3 zoning, uh, which would be a multi-family zoning. Uh, the applicant's goals were to combine the two parcels and construct a town home or a multi-family quadruplex of some sort on this side. Uh, however, uh, as the same as last time, the Property Owners Association, um, associated with the neighborhood along Fernleaf and Thomas Road, uh, did come forward with a restrictive covenant document, um, that shows that their neighborhood, uh, does prevent this from happening. It would only allow single family on the lot. And as such, um, the planning department, uh, would be, because we have that knowledge now, we are unable to, based on the Planning Enabling Act, to issue, issue any permits. we are unable to, based on the Planning Enabling Act, to issue any permits with respect to that, with the exception of, for a single-family home on that property. The Planning Commission did vote on April the 12th, six to zero, to deny the parcel to be rezoned as well. And this concludes staff's report.
And so the Planning Commission did not like this?
Yes, that is correct.
Chair recognizes for ten.
Just for clarification purposes, the requests have come in for us to change the zoning despite the fact that the restrictive covenants prohibited.
That is correct. And the property owner was made aware of this.
But, all right. And so a no vote by us would allow the property to remain in conformity with the restrictive covenant?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And then a question to our decision. So we have it for us now, Bill Number 2020-22-13, which is ordinance that did go before our planning permission, and our planning commission did deny this particular rezoning. So at this point, an ordinance to rezonate from NC-15 to NC-6.3, this parcel located at 2150 Fernleaf Drive is before us. What, are you, if you're in favor of changing this zone, you will vote yes. If you're not in favor of changing and doing what the commission has stated needed to be done, you will vote no. So all those in favor of changing the zone, please signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All those who are opposed to changing the zone, please signify by also saying aye.
Aye.
So let the record reflect that majority has stated aye, that we will not be changing the zoning on Bill Number 2022-13. Next, we have Bill Number 2022-14 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to rezonate from NC-6.1 to NC-6.2. The parcel is located at 1309 West Dixie Street and identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 90044-01-005. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion in the second, and at this time, we'll hear from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor. This property is located along West Dixie Street. Its current zoning is NC-6.1, which allows single-family detached housing. The proposal is to zone it to NC-6.2, which would additionally allow a duplex to be built on the property. So it would expand the zoning to allow this use as well. The property is a bit larger than other parcels directly to the west. As you can see, the environment along Harmony Street and Dixie Street and this lot to the north and the south is of duplex development, although it would not meet our code today, the way it's oriented or the way it's designed in that aspect. But properties to the east are characterized by single-family detached development, as well as a church that's located here. At Planning Commission, they did vote to deny this request unanimously, six to zero. And this was in order to maintain the limitation to single-family uses in this district along this Dixie Street corridor here, as it seemed to be a transitioning point between the duplex development and single-family development.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. So this ordinance was denied from the Planning Commission. I do believe we have two individuals signed up to speak. We have Ms. Marissa Cooper and also Ms. Jean Coliford to come forward to speak. You can come forward together in that order. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And it is evening. All of our supporters have to go back to work, but Jean and I are retired, and I think they've dumped a lot on us because we are retired. But I do want to thank those council members who tolerated and protected. You all know I'm adamant about my neighborhood. I think you heard Wendy. We met. And Sharon, she loves her neighborhood. I love mine. And I think she said, and that's what drew it in my heart, she said, "It's not a black-white thing." I like that. It meant that we are in this together about our community. And I thank you. And I thank you up here, those of you who work with me. My mom lived in that neighborhood. My dad and my mom bought their house on the other end of the street with six children, small house, but they added on to it. But it was ownership. They were renting. And when they moved from the country and it was rented, all the folks in the country were so proud because my dad was the first homeowner. They had land in the country, but nobody wanted to live in the country. They wanted to come to the city because they wanted to raise their children there. And Dad died, I was senior in high school. And in that community, the next door to me, where my second-grade teacher was Dorothy Wright, there were only two houses there because that community was just growing. And when they started adding the other houses, we became like a family in that community. And as the older ones died out, it became somewhat areas dilapidated. But still, the love was there. And then there was a gentleman that moved back home, who was also raised one street over, start building up some homes there. And like Lawrence was up here talking about, it does take money to refurbish these homes. Now, because my neighborhood is not what maybe somebody else's neighborhood should be, you shouldn't say, "That's a good place to put those apartments." What you see on the picture look pretty, but those are barracks. If you seen a barracks on the base, those are barracks down there. And I have nothing against the developers or the gentlemen, because everybody trying to make a living. But you also have to look at where I live, I want to live, too. And where I have my community, my family and friends, we want it nice. So when I picked up the paper and saw that this was, you know, not knowing the process or the procedures, I said, "Oh, no, they already denied it at the city planning meeting because they said those barracks were grandfathered in and that they couldn't build anything that they're going to go up and houses." Well, you know, we already was over on Harmony Street fighting for them, the other developers bringing in. And here a sign goes up on one street over. I said, "Wait a minute. I thought it's illegal to do spot zoning." And you know, in one street over, and here's a one little lot, you want, "Well, I want to build my new place just like the rest of them." But then, when the planning commission tells you that that was grandfathered in, you can't do it. Well, you know, we were a little shocked. We want our community to have homes. People want homeownership. Now, you say, "Well, why are we, you seeing our faces at all of the meeting?" It's because there are elderly people live there, and they asked us to speak for them. And Jean lives in that area. And all of a sudden, since all of this building come up, then all of the killing starts going over in West Florence area. Scary. So I'm saying, "Why do you want to build some new place and 10 years gonna fall apart? City's gonna have to be responsible taking care of it. Then you're gonna have the same problem that we have now." So why not try to take the money, build those new things, and let's improve? We were not talking about that. Improve what we already got. And have the young people to come in. There are young people asking me, "What can I do to get money?" Well, what kind of program does the city have where you can come and talk to them and you help them to get their finances in spirit? Because you all know the young people now, not like the young people do in my day. We had kids. We knew how to save our money and be stingy to get housing. They don't know that now. I have three young men, three sons, and we still teaching. Now, I have one that really took the bid. He's running a family business and daughter's been in the family over 100 years. Cooker barbershop entrepreneur, and he's lower age. But the other two, well, they fine. But we want them to know that you have got to, is it, put something in to get something out. You got a new generation here now. And so we all got to stick together. And it's Wendy put her proposal up there, what she put together. We went to the Briggs meeting, and you saw someone came over to us, and they say, "We want to stay, but we got to go." They support us because they know what we're going through, too. So it's not a black-white thing. We just want a community. And if we can show the other cities and the other community that Florence is thinking together, that we are trying to do what's for all and not let these outsiders come in and putting these things up and leaving. Because I'm taking pictures of the developer of the, we had them to come, and we invited big city council members, and they came and they did the presentation to us. And they showed the beautiful buildings. We were fair. We gave them a chance to tell us what you're gonna give us. And you know what they said? Well, first they hear about the housing. But when it came down to brass tacks, the only thing they could build was apartments. They can't build the housing. But they said they can leave the property, I mean, some property for you to have housing. What we want is leave all of that alone. Let's get cleaned up what we got here now. You know, there's a biblical term. You said, "You don't put new wine in a little container." So you bring it in new into the old. Y'all already got mess over there. You know, our neighborhood is vulnerable. And it hurt me when I read what one of the council members up here said. And I'm not throwing rocks, because I don't believe in throwing a rock in hiding hand. My mama said that. Don't do that. She said, "God got a will. Let it all come out." A council member said, "I believe that West Florence would be a good fit for those apartments." You never lived there. You don't live there now. Don't walk in my shoes and say you have. Listen to me. We know what West Florence is like. We know what's going on over there, all of the mess that you all reading about. And you saw that group came in, and we whipped them, too, but we couldn't leave because we had to stay here to let you know, "We don't want no more barracks, apartments. We are only asking for homeownership homes. Help us fix up what we got." I didn't mean to elaborate that long, but my mom lived to be 105. She came into these chambers and Mayor gave her, what, some wore a plaque that she gave her. And my mom, at first, they didn't think she was able to walk. She said, she said, "Well, I can, she said, "Oh, I can walk." Because you see, when she was getting old, she said, "I ask God, give me my mind at my sight." And I'm a witness. Ms. Ferguson's a witness. My mom had her mind at her sight. So I believe and I'm praying that God will allow this community, not a black-white community, a community, the Florence City. You know, I know you all want change and growth, and I've read that community development. I read all that stuff you all have, but y'all got to look at the people instead of the buildings and whatever. What we want in our community, and I get emotional. I am a retired principal educator. I worked for the South Carolina Attorney General Office for 10 years. I worked with Ed Clemens at the courthouse. I worked with Judge Caldwell. I work with those people up there with juveniles, nonviolent juvenile offenders. And I got to learn in Florence, black and white, children coming from home and problems that they have. Hearing a young man talking about the basketball stuff. There's a whole lot in me that I get emotional about when you talking about going into a community and putting more stuff in it instead of cleaning up the stuff you already got there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jean Zollkoffer. And like she said, I'm a resident of that community, born and raised in that community. And I am here to express a strong opposition regarding the application of rezoning Harmony Street. I'm for change. Don't get me wrong, but I'm for good change, something that's going to benefit our people, black and white, okay? And I feel that if we rezonate this place, it's going to be more detrimental to our community. I read this article about one of the council members, and it said that Florence has a relatively higher rental property population of 41.5%. 41.5% rental. 41.5% rental here in Florence. That's higher than the national average. So these people, they've read this stuff, too. So what are they doing? Coming in here, building these, I call them army barracks, and putting our people in there and charging them rent every month. They making a killing. All right? So we want to own our own property so we can hand it down to our children. As a matter of fact, that's how I got mine.
Generational wealth.
Okay. Pardon?
Generational wealth.
Generational wealth. That's right. That's what we want. And you should want it, too, because if you have children or nieces or nephews, you want to leave them something. Leave them something. Of course, you have to train them and tell them what to do, but you still want to leave them something. That's what you want to do. And that's what we want to do. We don't want to put these rental things. We really don't want any rental property over there at all. That adds to that percentage. We don't want that. You shouldn't want it either. And I was reading that thing said, your mission statement. Take a look at it. I mean, you know, take a look at what you wrote. It looks nice, but you got to show that. You know, it's for, it said, "We," not "me." "We," not "me." That means the whole line. And over there in our community where we have, we have so many problems. I'm not talking about crime, per se. That's all over, like someone said. But I want to pinpoint some things that we have over in that northwest community. As a matter of fact, nearly all our residents in that area, they own their own homes. They own their own homes, which were passed down from one generation to the next. And they have pride in it, because our parents worked extra hard to get what we have. Saving a little bit here and trying to feed five or six kids off one check coming in. That was very hard. And we have pride in that. So that's what we want to pass on down. Okay? We have some concerns over there, like every place else. In that area, what we have now, I went over there, what do they call that area? I call them army barracks. Y'all don't know. I forgot what they call the little thing. But there's a whole bunch of them. They had the map up there. Okay? And I just drove around there several times. We have a traffic problem. Now, Volcraft is right there on Sutter Street. As a matter of fact, they have added or bought more land. You have these big trucks coming in, getting those steel things to do for bridges and that kind of stuff. Do you realize how big people get out of that area to get to Cashwell Street or Darlington Street? With these big trucks. Luckily, nobody has gotten killed because they drive. I mean, you know, those truck drivers, they are driving, and someone could get hurt with that. It's not safe for the pedestrians there, because we do have people that walk. We have people that walk in that area. Okay? And like I said, our traffic jams are at the end of Flynn Street, Hartwell, Harmony Street, Munch Street, and Alexander, just to get to Sutter Street. Those are only exits from that area and to get to Darlington Street, not to mention Cashwell. Okay? All right? The local neighborhood traffic surges during morning and evening, which impacts the safety of the children walking to the bus stop on the side of the road without sidewalks. That's very dangerous. Also, some parents taking their children to Carver School Child Development Center on Cashwell, on Cashwell and the Child Development Center on Sutter Street. We're like in a hub there, trying to get out safely and return back with our families. We have the safety of the children that concerns me playing in the street. There's no parks or nothing. They playing in between those army barracks and in the street. Parents are lucky enough to buy those basketball things you can pull in the street, and they can play with that. But cars are coming and going and stuff like that. So that's really, really bad. No place for children to play. As a matter of fact, if I was over in that area, we had two little girls that came out of one of those places, and they drug a piece of tree limb across the ditch. That's another drainage park. And they were balancing themselves on that. The ditch was full of water, y'all. Okay? That is a problem there. Of course, property value, like I said, so many of us own our homes, and our property value is going to go down. That's an insult to our generation for the property value to go down. We want single-family houses, single-family detached houses. We deserve that. We deserve that. Okay? Trash pickup, trash everywhere. You have the little green trash cans, the city green trash cans. You have two families per duplex. Those families have children. They have so many people occupying that one place. You have trash. You put another duplex in there, what's going to happen to the trash? It's going to get... It's gonna get, you're gonna have more and more. Now, you know you have a one-day trash pickup when they come around. However, people, the trash can is so small and whatever, they putting it on the side of the street. On the side of the street. Now, my people, we can't travel. The nearest trash big old bin thing is over there by Greater Gett Seminole Church on Marion Highway. I think that's what you call it. Or you go to Ebenezer over there. Ebenezer's 10 miles away. How are we gonna haul something 10 miles away? You understand what I'm saying? So if you wanna get it out of, they wanna get it out of their homes, which we all would wanna do. But there's no place for us to put it. You understand? And we don't have the way to get it over there. Okay. So now, the next thing is parking for residents. People that live in these places have maybe two cars. But you know they have family members come over and other people that come to visit. They're parking in the street. There's nothing else. Got to worry about the children going in between these parked cars playing and whatnot. So that's another problem there that we have. Okay? There are other problems as well that you can foresee. So we don't want that. You probably wouldn't want it in your neighborhood. Think about us. We don't want it either. We're concerned about the safety of our people and not having rental property anymore in our property. We want to stress being homeowners. Homeowners, owning our own property. Thank you very much and have a beautiful day.
Thank you. I think you have a. Pro temp. I don't remember. I'm gonna go with the pro temp and Friday pro temp, Councilman McCall. Oh, let me correct. It was so far along and I wasn't sure. If you wouldn't mind, you went to the pro temp. I appreciate it. Thank you.
First off, thank you all for hanging out and waiting almost three hours to, to have your time. And so we appreciate that so much. And like the presentation that we heard earlier, there's a symmetry of what we're hearing and about community and the need for all of us to work together and the need to see what can we do to address the housing issue? Because we, we have a housing problem here in our city. Not enough single-family homes, but there's people wanting to move here and there's just not enough housing, period. So we do need affordable housing as well. What I did want to, in addition to thanking you for being here and certainly I, I, I'm not in favor of changing the zoning. I can just speak for myself on that. I'll just also mention to you that the Business Development Committee for the city, and it's gonna be in our report coming up in just a few minutes. We have, during our April meeting, we took on the task of looking citywide at trying to develop a housing program and trying to do a study to see what, where are we at with our needs? What do we need to do? And, and it's not an immediate fix. So I, I don't wanna lead anybody to believe that this is something that we're gonna have a solution to tomorrow. But we already have initiated the process of starting to do a study. And this is something that is gonna be an ongoing effort that we're gonna be looking at both for, in, in particularly looking at the high-density housing. That's whether it's an apartment complex or the low-income housing, whichever it may be. Because when you cluster those together particularly, you know, one by itself is not as big an issue. And, and I know this is something that Representative Jepa Jordan, who came before the Briggs Neighborhood Committee, uh, meeting last week, did a presentation about some legislation that's currently going on in Columbia to try to address notice and the notice to the community. So the community have an opportunity to have input. And that's some new legislation. But he also had tried to get separation between these units, but was unsuccessful in getting an amendment on that. So the city, we wanna take a look at it. I mean, we are bound by the Fair Housing Act and we have to act within that. But changing zoning from single-family away to something else is something that City Council historically has really given a hard look at. And there has to be some compelling reasons for that. So thank you for coming forward with that. But I did wanna mention that the city has undertaken to begin the process of looking at this on a comprehensive basis for the whole city. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
Thank you. And I, and I appreciate you all's presentation today. And it definitely gives me a lot to think about. I've been to one of the community meetings in, in, in Northwest. And I definitely heard the concerns of the, of the people there. I think it was another one I was, I think at Briggs. I was, I think I had a prior engagement. I couldn't make that one. I, I understand the, the position we have far for the residents. And, and I, and I'm in agreeance when we're talking about changing the zones. If it's already, we already have a, a future use for the land being single-family homes. I don't think we should change it for multifamily. I do agree on that. But I am, I would add this as a product of someone from affordable housing. I will, you know, watch this issue closely. But I can speak about the dignity that a lot of those people have for the first time, being able to have their own place. So that's, that's, and that's a stepping stone to being ownership, right? A lot of the time, you're talking about young people who's just looking for a sense of dignity, being able to call a place home. So I, I remember the first time when, I know my councilwoman, Councilwoman Morris said I get too sensitive on some, some, oh, some issues. I remember the first time my mom was able to move out of my grandparents' house. And it was, of course, it was affordable housing. It was really rental. But nevertheless, the sense of dignity she had, having her own place. So I'm in favor of not changing anything that would, would disagree with me. But I'm not in favor of essentially stopping every, every affordable housing project across city. I'm not. I think we can, we all know that there's a affordable need out there. But particularly where does it goes? You know, I, I think that's, that's an issue that I guess can be studied. But I'm not in favor of going around and trying to stop every affordable housing project. I'm not. But I am not going to try to hurt any communities. And again, so I was elected by the people. And I definitely will listen to the people's concerns and, and I, you know, wanna vote in their favor. But again, I, it just, it's sentimental, it's sentimental value to me, I would say. You know, because oftentimes, you know, these people who live in these affordable units, you know, they don't know much about them. You know, they're not gonna come to the city council meeting. They're not gonna, you know, they probably not, more likely not gonna vote. All right? So that's very important. But nevertheless, I think, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and just allow for each project to be stopped. And, but again, if it's changing zone, if it's changing zone in, in communities, I think, you know, that's, that's not a good thing. But I don't think it's, because it's, it's across, it's not just Florence. It's across the country. You're seeing affordable homes, affordable homes or affordable units are, are, are being attacked across the board. And it's becoming more of a political issue. And I, I think you all definitely have a, a community influence on it as well. But it's becoming a political issue where you're seeing people are literally trying to stop affordable homes, affordable housing. Your, your case is different, which I, which I, I agree. But those people who live in those homes are oftentimes voiceless. And I'm gonna protect that. So thank you for your opinion on that.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Packett's time, Moore.
Okay, as I said at our last meeting, that contractor was very upset with me, I think. Because I told him, community doesn't want that because you're gonna build those, those army barracks, you said. And the people are gonna move in and out of them. And before you know it, it's just gonna be one mess. And I asked him, I said, do you build houses? He said, yes, I build houses, but I keep them for 15 years before I sell them. Okay, so you wanna get all this money out of the community first and then sell the house. But by now, it's torn, it's torn up, just as these army barracks would be. So I totally agree with you and understand. I know what Councilman Coles is, say Coles is saying, but I can't agree with him. Because most of the time, the rent is just as high as if you, if you get a first-time home buyer. They're still charging eight and nine hundred dollars for these army barracks, as you call it. So what's the, what's the purpose? It's just destroying your neighborhood. So I definitely agree with everything that you ladies have said. And I will never vote to change that, the zoning on this, on that area. So you don't have to worry about my vote. You know where I'm at. And I, I would definitely do it for you this time, next time, and time after that.
If there's no other first one, now you, to Councilman McCall.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm not in favor of changing zones. If you're in a neighborhood where it's made, it's been zoned for single-family homes, I think we should definitely keep that, that same trend. I think this particular one, Harmony Street, is zoned for single-family homes. And changing it to allow multifamily units, I think, is not conducive for what you're all trying to do. Secondly, what I would say is this, and I think it was, it was brought to that meeting about a month out, that I, I don't, I don't wanna mess the name up. But I remember Ms. Cooper, that's good. I think Ms. Cooper said that, you know, in, in the northwest area, historical west, there has probably not been a major development there in over 50 years, right? So I, I wanna floor a council, what can we do? And that's, that's a rhetorical question. But I think we should definitely look at how can we help get more developments to the area. Not, not multifamily units. I know you're, we're not advocating for multifamily units. But what particular, what can we do? I think we're, we're seeing major growth on the west side, west-west side. But not particularly northwest. And I guess the first developer to come in about over 50 years is someone who, who wants to do multifamily units. So I definitely understand. Because what's gonna happen is you're gonna have people who like my age who are looking to purchase homes. And, you know, they're gonna, you know, they were born and raised in northwest Florence. But if they didn't have a development there in over 50 years, they're gonna look elsewhere to move. And you have the church.
Please.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Councilman McCall, you continue, then we're.
Keep going. Yeah, 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 yeah. So I'm sorry. I was trying to talk. Well, yeah, but what, because again, she mentioned, you know, over 50 years. What can we do to help increase development up there? And again, not multifamily units, primarily single-family units. I mean, we didn't have Woodmont, Spalding Heights, all that stuff on the north side, but nothing northwest side. So thank you. I'm sorry, I, I promise you, it was my turn. I thought she said you was done.
Yeah, I thought she was done.
I'm sorry.
So Chair recognizes Councilman Moore to continue.
Now, I'm glad that you jumped in because I can tell you what we can do. We can do what we're doing in so many other areas. Build single-family homes for first-time home buyers. That's what we can do for first-time home buyers.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm with you on that. Sorry, last time, last time.
Yes.
Before we proceed any further, I'm gonna ask for our Deputy City Manager, Scotty Davis, to come forth. And there's a reason why I'm asking him to come forth. When it comes to development, we have three catalytic areas in the city of Florence. That's the historical west Florence area, which is the original west Florence where Ms. Cooper's speaking of. Then we have the north Florence development area, which is also a catalytic area. Then we have a catalytic area on Pine Street. But going back, and I went here and I pulled up some of my emails, going back to 2015 and probably a little bit further, we started the Community Revitalization and Stabilization, which was the ADCOT committee that was created. With that committee, it was myself, Councilwoman William Blake, and William Blake. Also, there was Councilman Robbie Hill, along with our Deputy City Manager and our manager and also our planner, went, what, three states within about 24 hours during research. We hired a consulting group, which is Mr. Wiles, APD. They actually developed a plan that specifically hit those three catalytic areas for all the reason you're stating now. And this is not, this for the city of Florence. This is happening throughout our nation, especially with your historical communities, especially historical African-American communities. So this is not new. When that, even before that, I remember not being on council. And Mr. Davis spoke about the broken glass syndrome. In other words, when you started letting these issues with the dilapidations and vacancies start, they start to mirror themselves in other communities. We've got it in three areas and it's starting to mirror some in Timrod. And I think you spoke to that probably in early, about 2008, someplace up in there. So where we at is not, is a place where the city, where the force side of the leadership saw this. So with Mr. Wiles, there was a plan created. The plan is in place. And I'm not sure, Scotty, has that information been shared with the Community Development Committee yet?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So there's a plan that's in place where the city actually developed a plan through Mr. Wiles. It actually looks at what kind of businesses can be thriving in the areas that we look at going outside across the railroad track? Because this is mainly where it started, heavy effect that. Also identified the three areas that more likely if you place home there, you can start buyers to coming in. Not only that, when you look at it, on Vista Place, the homes that was built initially on Vista Street, when they started that, Scotty set up a meeting to invite bankers there. The community came out and drove to support this plan. We had one banker that came from Columbia, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
We did not have any local banks who showed up. Because no one thought that you could do things to start that development back in communities. Because these community areas have been, they resulted, have the effect that people wanted to buy for rentals. So when Vista Street was started, those three homes was started and it was award-winning. Those homes all sold. And believe it or not, those people are from either side of the city of Florence. Correct, it's worse ways, Washington DC, who purchased those homes. So Liberty Street and Appleby Settler's new home there. Now, all for the historical west Florence, you have old conversation. The two homes there was actually invested, the builder was our first public-private venture. Those homes, the first two he built, already sold. He's looking at building more. But not only that, you have homes that have been built, been built now also by another builder, primarily due to a lot of those is on Glassstone, but he has also areas on Ingram. So the growth for a single-family home has been spearheaded. So it's shown and proven people want to invest back in community. There are people who wanna come back in the community to own their homes. So everything you say, the city's already got evidence and support and the plan is there for the areas. Pine Street, the first left home has been pouring there. COVID with pricing is what has delayed there. So there is a plan for our areas. Been in place, established back in about 2014, 2015 through the Wiles development. It's been paid for. But that plan also can be, correct, Scott? It can be repeated throughout the city, correct that one, Mr. Wiles?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have a plan, but we've got to work the plan. And we've got to put the money there and also get those public-private dollars in place. Because when you think about downtown, that's what happened with downtown. It started off primarily with, you know, Florence Downtown Development Corporation working hard to get it going. But it was when the private sector got involved and drawn with the city, got Hotel Florence, someone else invested. And then you started to see the growth downtown. That's the same pattern that the city's treating for the community. And I agree with you. One of the concerns is that when it comes to high density, that with this plan here with Jesse, you don't wanna have a lot of high density in the communities such as district, the historical west Florence and the historical two, historical Vista Place and historical Pine, because it's already so overwhelmed with rentals. So that cycle needs to be reversed. We know that as a city. We know it. And we do have a plan. So we need to work that plan. And I understand that with the Business Committee, David Smith, and it's a good thing now to look at how we can do it for the whole city because we need to look collectively that others are seeing our high rental numbers are near wanna come. And if we don't have these, all the areas covered till we get a plan, it's gonna affect us all. So I think that everything that's gonna come forward, even from the Business Committee and what we have in place, that we can exercise it. I stated a lot, but I wanna have Scotty to state the importance of where we're at with this, with our community development plan.
Mayor, you certainly did a great job in giving the summary.
Thank you.
I could just add a little bit more to that. The city's been working on, as you mentioned, affordable housing, single-family affordable housing for years and years, decades. We've done studies. We do know that in, in traditional west Florence, the rental is 70% or more in those areas. And we've been targeting. And we've been targeting that with a number of different products, and those products actually fall out of Jerry Dudley's office now. But we have a number of products uh that this council has given staff the tools, i.e. money, to work those plans. Uh, we have monies through our C D B G, our Community Development Block Grant, those are funds we've set aside. We've been successful in getting monies through the state and through the federal government to set aside some money. And several years ago, this council set aside approximately three million dollars, and we've been working with that. We've purchased about sixty lots throughout the years, uh and we've been building on those lots there. We have houses at different price points. Uh, certainly our Vista Street properties that we did a few years ago, those were some larger homes. Uh, we did approximately two hundred thousand dollars homes there. We gave significant down payments in those houses. And we wanted to build the market up in those areas there. Uh, not everybody could afford those houses, we certainly understand that. And that's why, again, we have different products uh to meet different price points. We did find in our studies that the market could afford the houses, the higher end houses. We found that a lot of people in the areas, north Florence, uh east Florence, traditional northwest Florence there, were moving out into the west, further west and south areas because the product wasn't available. So we started to build a higher end product there in those areas. Again, trying to find housing for everybody, uh existing homes. We do have monies uh through our C D B G program uh to purchase existing homes. So everybody can't afford a new house or build a new house. So we do have funds for existing housing in our, our city as well uh there. We are continuing to work those programs. Covid hit and caused us a lot of problems. We were building houses uh in, in certain neighborhoods for ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. Those same houses now a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so a lot of people can't afford that, uh and, and the city is struggling as well. We continue to try to work with developers, uh they're trying to work with the market. Once we get contracts on houses, we have been successful uh on Pine and selling houses, even selling the house uh before it's complete there, because the need is great in the city for affordable housing units there. Uh, and, and homeownership is, is critically important. Uh, it certainly builds our city, it builds our tax base, talks about pride and ownership there. Uh, all the studies that show, uh generally speaking, kids do better in school even when they have homeownership uh in the aggregate. So we certainly are aware of that. We've concentrated exclusively and extensively on single family ownership. Now that doesn't mean that there won't be times when the city is working with people, working with developers to do uh multi-family housing. Uh, most, I, I lived in multi-family housing before, a number of people have lived it. And that's certainly an opportunity there that, that we can't take lightly. And I think we talked about, some council members talked about fair housing, that's something that we do have to address and, and work uh collectively with, with the federal government, the state government on those codes that the city has signed off on and certified that we will do. Uh, but the plan is still, the housing plan, affordable housing plan is still in place. Uh, staff is looking to see if we need to uh reinvent that plan. Uh, since we have done a lot of, of the uh items, the action items in that plan, one is, is the uh operation of the nonprofit that this council agreed to a few months ago. That was a part of the plan. We look to hope to get that group working. We have identified a couple of other developers that we're working with. Uh, and, and again, all the information about our housing program can be found on our second floor in uh the Community Services Department. Uh, again, Jerry Dudley is our director of that department. Uh, that phone number, six six five three one seven five, six six five three one seven five. All the information on affordable housing, again, can be found with our staff there.
And I thank you, Scotty, for bringing that up, because I want to be sure that the general public understand that there is a plan in place in the city. And we can also always update, this plan is needed. But especially for Ms. Cooper and Ms. Zalikoff for speaking, to know that there is a plan. And that is why the development that you see that's occurring has occurred, because it has been being facilitated by the city. So I wanted y'all to be, um be sure to be aware of that. But also, when we speak of affordable homes, I do want to state that the housing authority themselves, they're also looking at what they can do to change their housing model. There are some developments on Oakland Street that the housing authority is reevaluating too, because they're tending to move away from a lot of high density. They're even have a piece where their vaulters for years not going to be used toward homeownership. So even the housing authority is having a shift in the way they look at things. So at this time, I'm going to recognize Councilman McCall.
Uh, real briefly, I'm sorry. What, and I, and I, I love the plan that came, that was, you know, that was brought forth by the previous council. And I think we, and we definitely voted for um a resolution to help fund it, uh put some more money in it for, in July, if, if we can get the, if we can get the numbers correct. Um, well, I'm sorry, but what I was, was a small clarification, what I was mentioning was, um, of, of course, the city is doing great development. But I would say, I was particularly talking about, how can we get outside or, 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 um, non-city entities that come into the building? Uh, what I was saying was, you know, the first, they didn't have, they didn't have a major private development, excuse me, in over fifty years. And we, all the time, we, we get people coming to council all the time with four hundred, four hundred uh lots or homes, two hundred lots of homes, but nothing for, you know, but private, private, not public, but private developers. The first thing that comes up in their neighborhood is multifamily. So I, so I'm sorry, the question I was at the point was, how do we get more private developers to want to give them more affordable homes? Because I'm sorry, I was the one to clarify that.
And, and I, I understand what you're saying, that's why I did want to emphasize that the private developer is the one that's the old conversation, that is a private developer. What happened with that, we actually have the lot, so we just put a part of his pack, but no, that's private development there. One of the reasons, what you also can have to look at when you, and all of this is part of what we did in the ad hoc committee. If you look at large development, you're seeing a lot of development that's coming in with a one hundred and two hundred homes. A lot of your traditional community around downtown don't have that kind of space. So that is why when you see a big developer coming in, they're looking at the big spaces. Because if you can go into a big space, you can repeat those patterns for the home. And I'm, I'm a retired realtor, so it's a financial investment. When you come in to do an investment, you want to be able to show that you can also profit. You need to have your gains, because you don't want to go in and lose. So northwest area, I know of at least two large tracts of land, and one of them is city-owned. And the other one, as you know, Harmon Street is also owned by a private developer. So those are your biggest, largest tracts. The other areas, when you get in the traditional historical west Florence area, a lot of that's county. A lot of people don't realize, once you get down to some street, you're starting to go into the county. You can go down by every street, after some street, and you can hit county, correct? And so a lot of that is county, you may have one or two houses that's zoning the city. A lot of our original community on the west side is not city. And the same thing, when you come and you look at, north Florence has a good tract when you're pulling out, going back towards Spalding Heights. And Spalding Heights was built in nineteen sixty-two, one of the first ones that was done for African-American that allowed brick homes and things. And then you go over to east Florence, when you get past Pine and stuff, you're starting to go into, correct, you're going to start going into a lot of county, even over there. So the city people, a lot, the city is really small when it comes to big tract of land. And understand, with these studies and things that we did, that was what it's for, and that's what we're projecting out for. So I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Barnes at this time.
Yeah, um, I, I, I want to thank you all for, for coming before us. Um, one of the things I just wanted to add, because you all gave a wealth of, of information, there are also individuals who are coming back home in the community, in the west and the north um area and, and investing. One of the people called me, and I think he was from New York. His son is um an actor, but he's from Florence, he's from west, the west Florence area. And I think, I, I put him with, with Scotty, and he contacted me about a month ago, and he thanked me and said, it looks like it's going well. And so we've got individuals who are coming forth to say, hey, I want to actually come back into my community that I came out of to actually seed into. But one of the things I do want to say, and I, and I think I said that at the meeting with, with um, in west, in west Florence, and I'll say like um Chiqua said, I, when I got there, I had one mindset until I heard from the people in the community. Because right now, all of our minds are saying, how can we bring about change? How can we bring about change? This is not something that anybody wants to put on any community. Our mindset is, how can we make our community better? And so we thank you for coming forward to tell us your, your um opinions and, and what, what you all need in the community. But, but know that every decision and everything that we do is always, what can we do to make it better? And, and, and so I, I've just got to thank you for coming forth, because you help us to, to craft our decisions.
And then the councilman, and Chair, Ms. Ms. Cooper, will you please come forward to the um?
Before you all make your vote, I would like to read some minutes of the last meeting, uh because the zoning, rezoning of the property was denied, and they gave a reason why it was denied. I don't know whether you all have that before you, but I want to read to you why it was denied. Chairman Staff asked staff, Chairman Howard, excuse me, asked staff why it was zoned to be incompatible with the existing use. Mr. Dudley explained that at the time of the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance and its maps in two thousand eighteen, the maps were reviewed by the city council, the staff, and the public, and the designation was based on the comprehensive plan. Public dispe- displeasure with the style, remember we said duplexes? Of the duplexes, which were permitted under the old zoning designation, was what prompted a moratorium on that style. After public input, the area was changed to single family zoning under the new map. The owners of the existing duplexes could rebuild them if they were destroyed, if they got permits within six months under the non-conformity section of the U D O. Chairman Howard asked Mr. Dudley to clarify the part about the moratorium on the style of the duplexes. Mr. Dudley said duplexes are actually single family attached houses and are supposed to look like single family houses, but these look more like that. Council put the moratorium on that style and established design standards in the U D O for style, materials, parking, and so on, to avoid such buildings in the future. Chairman Howard commented that the change in zoning was not a mistake or accident. Mr. Dudley said, no, it was deliberate. Ms. Murray asked if it was correct that we're requiring him to put in single family, then even with duplexes in the area because of the zoning. Mr. Dudley said that was correct. Mr. Bernard, that's the developer, assured the commission that he was willing to construct the duplex to the design standards required by the U D O, which were changed because the residents didn't want the old style of duplex. There'll be no one to speak in favor of the request. Chairman Howard asked if there was anyone who wanted to speak. Uh, Pastor Jonathan Bridge spoke, opposed to it. Myself, opposed, Mrs. Zalikoff opposed. And I reiterate, reiterate some of the things you heard us say today. Chairman Howard thanked thus far feed, thanked them, let me read it, what's here? Thanked them for their feedback and closed the public hearing. He asked if the chair neighborhood would be more interested in the duplexes if they were turned sideways, that looked more like single family houses. And they still weren't interested. Mr. Moses pointed out, listen, they want single family ownerships, not rentals, and duplexes imply rental units. Mrs. Zlaknickel, what's her name?
Mrs. Zlaknickel.
Mrs. Zlaknickel clarified that any duplex constructed would have to be built to the design standards called for in the U D O. Mr. Dudley pointed out that the lot is large enough that it could be subdivided into two lots, possibly with a variance of the lot width requirement of sixty feet. And the owner could build two single family houses on the lot. Chairman Howard said their job is to look out for the neighborhood, and it's good to know that the owner does have another option. And then called for a motion. Mr. Moses moved that the request to rezon be denied, Ms. Hines second, and the motion to deny the rezoning passed unanimously. But there was a part that I wanted to tell you about, um, Ms. George explained why, oh, here it is. Ms. Murray asked if he meant to build just one duplex or more. Ms. Hines said that the existing duplexes were grandfathered in. So he needs them to change the zoning to put in another one. She said that shouldn't be there to begin with. So he's asking us to go back to a non-conform use rather than going forward. They'd already left that, now they were asking the planning commission to go back to what they left, and they denied it. That was the reason it was denied, that's why when I read it in the paper, I was upset. And because I don't know proper protocol, then I realized, the buck stops with the council, so it had to come before y'all. And so I got on the phone and called everybody and took a picture of that in the paper, sent it to them, said we need to be there, voice our opinions, whether you go, whatever you go, but we need to let them know. We can't sit and cry if you're not there voicing your opinion, having input. Thank you.
Well, to Ms. Zalikoff and to Ms. Cooper, thank y'all for being here today. And um I do want to acknowledge what Ms. Cooper read out about that moratorium. And I would want to thank the community members who in twenty eighteen did that. But also acknowledge Councilman um Al Bradley from the county council, who worked with myself and also the ones from our um ad hoc committee to come together to create that and have that moratorium. And that's, again, where the city and county work together. So at this time, is there another discussion? We have a motion, and we have a second on the floor. And to reiterate, we're looking at bill number twenty twenty-two dash fourteen. That is an ordinance to rezon in C six dash one to N C six point two. The parcels located at thirteen oh nine West Dixie Street and identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel zero zero four four dash zero one dash zero zero five. Okay, so this is, all those in favor of doing a rezoning, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed to doing a rezoning, please signify by saying nay to the items, I say nay.
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 Let the record reflect that bill number twenty twenty-two dash fourteen has been unanimously declined and will not pass. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen for a first reading. It's an ordinance to abandon the interest in a property identified as Parkway adjacent to Florence County Tax Map Parcel number nine zero zero three seven dash zero three dash zero one three and Mimosa Drive. We were, do we have?
Second.
Do we have a first, a motion and a second? At this time, we hear from Mr. Jerry Dudley on this item.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This property is, is a long, narrow strip along Mimosa Drive. Um, I've got some illustrations here that I'll further describe it with. Um, but the property proposed for abandonment is adjacent uh to nine oh, let's see, nine oh four Sherwood Drive, or I'm sorry, nine oh seven Sherwood Drive. The um property is between the nine oh seven Sherwood Drive here and Mimosa Drive. And it's about a five foot wide by fifty foot long strip. And uh when we, they first brought this to us for abandonment, we, we didn't quite know, it doesn't have a council number. Um, it's not particularly right of way. It's just um some strange strips of property that exist um along, there's one, it extends all the way from, from where we're, what we're talking about, a little further south, all the way up to Cherokee. And then there's another little strip of it um further south along Mimosa Drive as well. Well, when we did some research on it and we found some old plats, there used to be a triangular park. Um, this map's a little skewed, it's an older map, Cherokee Road's up here, Mimosa curves around here. And there was a, a little park at one end and a little triangular park at the northern end. And this strip, you can see that little shaded line that runs right through there, was identified as Parkway. Uh, this plat, I believe, was from the nineteen forties, nineteen forty-two, when the neighborhood was first established. Well, over the years, and I'll back up again, um, the triang- Well, over the years, and I'll back up again, the triangular portions of the, comprised the actual little mini parks within the neighborhood, were abandoned and absorbed into private lots on both ends there. And the segment that's not joined here, that's not highlighted in yellow, had also been abandoned through the years. And it appears that the city did have some ownership, or it was granted some ownership of that by the neighborhood at some point. You know, not, didn't find records of all of these properties, but we did find some records that the city had abandoned other, some portions of this. So it's a little spotty, but we, it was enough to, you know, put some ownership on us, so we felt that bringing it before planning commission and council for abandonment prior to it being conveyed over was the proper thing to do. The reason that they would like it abandoned is they were trying to get a driveway, it's a through lot essentially, except for this sliver, and they wanted to get a kind of a rear driveway off of Mimosa Drive, and DOT would not grant them an encroachment permit because they didn't own the property. So through this abandonment, they would be able to complete that process through ownership of the lot. So I know this was a little confusing, and I hope the picture here clarified some of that, but feel free to ask any questions.
Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes Councilman Schofield.
Mr. Dudley, is there any storm drainage that was left there that we would still be responsible for, that we wouldn't be able to have access back to?
Some of the maps showed that there was some sewer line potentially running through there, but field surveys showed that we had no utilities running through.
Correct. But if we were able to identify any, we would be able to get an easement back onto it?
That is correct. And the way that would work is they wouldn't be able to, not that they would be able to build anything via setbacks anyway, but this property would have to still be non-developable. I believe in some of the language in the previous grantings of property, it has some language in there that it has to remain green and open space, but it's only a five-foot strip, so.
Any other discussion?
Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the passes of this ordinance to abandon and right-of-way, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it know that Bill number 2022-15 has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill number 2022-16 for first reading. It's an ordinance to amend the budget for the City of Florence, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
No.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? At this time, we're here for Mr. Yop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, you have before you this afternoon Bill 2022-16, and it does three things. One, first, it recognizes the accounting entries in the Water and Sewer Utility Fund that were necessary to account for the transfer of the property across the street to the urban square developer. This is a part of the conditional grant, it just recognizes it in our accounting records prior to the audit commencing in a few months. The second one was to recognize both the revenue and the expense for the old motel property at 1300 East Palmetto Street. Recognizes the donation of the revenue from Cloud Health and Dr. Bruce and Lee Foundation for the purchase of that property, as well as the expenditure for the purchase of the property. And then the third item is merely a scribbler's error correction in the budget. The total of the detailed items for the fire department capital project line item in the budget actually exceeded the amount in the capital project line item, so we're just cleaning that up. So it's just three basic accounting entries in the budget to make it conform to actions that were taken previously this fiscal year.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Bill number 2022-16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that. Bill number 2022-16 has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill number 2022-17 for first reading. It's an ordinance to amend Section 9-20 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Florence entitled littering. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Now, at this time, here from our city manager, Mr. Randy Osterman.
Mary, Council, thank you. The amendment in front of you was requested by Councilman Schofield, and it basically clarifies our current litter ordinance, placing additional responsibilities on, clarifies responsibilities on those with property that have litter containment, and it also increases the maximum fine from $200 to $500.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the passing of our Bill number 2022-17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that Bill has passed first reading. Next, we are heading to a segment for introductory resolutions. The resolution number 2022-14 will be discussed in executive session. It's a resolution of the City Council approving downtown redevelopment grants for the fourth quarter, year 2022. Resolution number 2022, number 15, is requested to be deferred, and it was a resolution to adopt a community development block grant fiscal year 2022, 2030. So if no objection, that resolution has been requested and shall be deferred. Next, we have report to our councils. Let me see. Yeah, now we've got a milk here. So we should have got that. So report to our council will be eight appointments to our boards and commission to be given by Mr. Scotty Davis, our deputy city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we have four boards or commissions that have vacancies or unexpired terms. Our first board is the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Ms. Dees has resigned, Shalana Dees has resigned from that board. She has, her unexpired term expires on June 30th of '23. The appointment falls to Councilman McCall. We do have two applicants, Michael Tommy Phillips and Miriam James Singley.
Councilman McCall, do you have a position?
Yeah, I want to mention, this time I would like to nominate Mrs. Miriam James Singley.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Mary Jane Singley.
Singley.
Singley. Do we have a second for the nomination?
Second.
Do we have a first and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that Ms. Mary Jane Singley has been appointed to the City of Florence Board of Zone and Appeals. Next.
Thank you. Our next board is the Board of Construction and Maintenance, Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We do have one vacancy on that board. The appointment must be a mechanical contractor. We do not have any applicants for this board, and all appointments to this board falls to Madam Mayor.
Seeing that we have no appointment, that would be deferred. Thank you.
Our next is the Aesthetics Advisory Committee. There are two seats to be filled on this board. The terms will be staggered for three years. We have no applicants. We do have councilmembers, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Moore making appointments.
Seeing that there is no applicants, that those appointments also will be deferred.
Our final board is our Resilience and Sustainability Advisory Committee. We have one seat on this board to be filled. The appointment must be a representative from District Two. We have no applicants, however, that appointment falls to Pro Tim Jabay.
Next, that completes our appointments to boards and commission, and I will once again make appeal to our general public to please go to thecityofflorence.com and look at all the various boards and commissions that have vacancy and please submit. That is another way that you, as a citizen, can have guidance in the way our city goes. Next, we will have our report of our committees. First, we'll have a report from our Business Development Committee by their chairperson, Pro Tim Jabay.
Thank you. The Business Development Committee met April the 14th, and we discussed a number of different things, but the main topic we discussed was the low-income housing and the high-density housing concerns that had been raised from the community. We looked at the projects specifically, there were ones that were coming forward from Second Loop Road one, Cashwell Drive one, Erby Street, and Harmony Street, and the, it was discussed what, having, that the city would benefit from having an assessment study done of these high-density housing, and there was a conversation about that, and a recommendation was made asking the city manager if he would look at, take in a look at developing a master plan of some sort with this, and that was a feedback that the committee gave to staff to look into these concerns. And I think that they will start to, my understanding is that process, Randy, you and staff are going to be starting that and will report back to us at some point.
We were investigating how the area was happening.
Yes, thank you. We also took a look at how that would tie in with the Unified Development Ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan, and these other plans that we've already had that are ongoing. One of the points that was raised is that we need to be mindful of how we are being perceived by others, the developers who are coming into town, bringing industry, and what we are presenting in terms of our being amenable to development. And I think it needs to be said that no one on this council has expressed any opposition to development. I think we just want to look at it smartly, and I think this committee has reiterated that point. We also then, it was mentioned that the demolition cost for the old motel over on East Palmetto Street, is, my understanding is, is $500,000 was, is the bid that was let for the demolition. Is that right?
It's about $500,000 when you include asbestos remediation.
The asbestos remediation, and so the funding we got from the county, $300,000, will go towards that with the $200,000 coming from the city to make up that difference. That was a report that we received. And unless there's something else from our other committee members, that's the report from the Business Development.
Thank you for that report. Next, we have our Community Development Committee reporting. That chair, Councilman Barnes, will be giving a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not meet on last month, so we don't have anything to report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We appreciate that. Thank you. Next, we have a report from our Marketing and Public Relationship Committee Chair, Councilman Braddock.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we met on April 27th and discussed a few items. One, we had looked into the potential to have a 30-minute segment on community broadcasters' station, and it just appeared that, given the format and the amount of time that would be required by our staff, it was not a good fit at this time, but we are continuing to look at other ways, other communication strategies in order to teach and inform people more about the city, also to start to build civic pride. We did also have a vaccination campaign update, continuing to talk about boosters through our social media and different forums. And we had requested some annexation information, given the city staff some time to put that together, given some other things that they have on the table right now. So that is what we have.
Thank you so much, Councilman Braddock. We appreciate your report. Next, we have our Financial Audit and Budget Committee. We have a report from that chair, Chair and Councilman McCall.
No report this time.
Thank you so much. At this time, that completes our committee reports. And next, we have our executive session. The items that will be upon our executive session is a discussion of a matter relating to proposed economic development project 30-4-70A5. And then we have a personnel matter, 30-4-70A1. And also, third, we'll have to receive legal advice concerning provision of sewer services, And if there's no objection, we can proceed into our executive session. Hearing none, we are now into executive session. We are back from our executive session, in which we took legal advice, but no vote or no action was taken. So first, our first item is an item in reference to discussion of a matter related to proposed economic development projects, 30-4-70A5. Do we have a motion?
So both.
Do we have a...
We make a motion to allow that...
The grant?
The grant.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, that the city staff be able to proceed with the grants as noted from our downtown development. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the item passed unanimously. Next, we had a personnel matter, number 30-4-70A1, in which no action was taken. With this personnel matter, our subcommittee will take this information and proceed to follow up on that personnel matter. Last but not least, we received some additional legal advice, no action, our vote was required. Does that complete all matters and bids for today?
We have adjourned.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. We stand adjourned.